Ready to go? Ready to go? All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening. Welcome to the May 27, 2025 Millbrae City Council Meeting, and I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:03 PM. City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Riley?
Here.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Present.
Vice Mayor Holliver?
Present.
Mayor Feng?
Here.
All the members of City Council are present.
Thank you very much. And for those who are able, would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. We begin tonight, Council meeting, with this ceremonial presentation proclaiming the month of June 2025 as Pride Month. And we have Councilmember Steven Rinaldi, please.
Whereas the city of Millbrae is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and/or questioning, intersex, and asexual LGBTQIA+ people in our diverse community. And whereas June has historically become a symbolic month in America after the Stonewall riots in Manhattan, New York back on June 28, 1969, where Marsha P. Johnson stood in solidarity to demand equality and respect for LGBTQIA+ individuals. And whereas LGBTQIA+ people have made invaluable contributions to the cultural, civic, social, and economic fabric of Millbrae, enriching our city with their talent, leadership, creativity, and resilience. And whereas we celebrate all LGBTQIA+ figures of the past whose advocacy and bravery paved the way for today's generation to live openly, authentically, and with pride. And we recognize the ongoing efforts of individuals and allies who continue this important work. And whereas while meaningful progress has been made towards equality or towards equity, LGBTQIA+ individuals still face discrimination, marginalization, and violence simply for being themselves, underscoring the importance of continued allyship, education, and collective action. And whereas every person has a role in fostering a more inclusive, informed, and compassionate community by celebrating diversity, rejecting hate, and misinformation, and uplifting voices that have historically been silenced. And whereas Pride Month is a time to celebrate, reflect, and advocate to build bridges, deepen understanding, and ensure that Millbrae remains a city where all people, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel seen, safe, and valued. And whereas we encourage residents to recognize and acknowledge these contributions of the LGBTQIA+ members of our community as we continue to advance the principles of liberty, equity, inclusivity for all. Now, therefore, we, the members of Millbrae City Council, co-pray City Council, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as Pride Month.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. And tonight, we're honored to have the Seminole County LGBTQ Commissioners, Marilyn Hollinger as well as Commissioner Vanessa Tapia, joining us this evening. Would you please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the rest of the council, and thank you for reading the proclamation. I want to say how important this proclamation is. I'm here representing the LGBTQIA Commission. It is the first commission of its type in the county or any county in California. And our job is to advise, both advise the county supervisors on issues relating to our community, and also to assist cities in recognizing our contributions. And so we thank you so much for doing this. You know, we just said the Pledge of Allegiance. And how does it end? With liberty and justice for all. Okay? We are living in a time right now, and I'm not exaggerating, where people are terrified, terrified of losing rights, terrified of being jailed, terrified of losing medical care, terrified of the fact that without counseling, transgender kids are three times more likely to commit suicide. Those are what we're afraid of, losing those services. And stepping up and making statements like this proclamation shows your allyship and shows your support in the face of that kind of hatred and bigotry. And it means something. It's not just a piece of paper. I lived in Millbrae for 15 years, and I raised my children here. And both of my children are transgender. And so this is, and I'm a lesbian, and this means, this is very, very personal for me. And to know that there's a safe place in our county, in the city of Millbrae, is so meaningful. And to know that the children who were raised here and the people who live here can be safe and have the support of the City Council. Thank you very, very much for this proclamation.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Hollinger. Commissioner Tapia, do you have a few words for us?
Thank you so much. Pride Month is a vital time for reflection and celebration honoring those and the courage of those who fought for our rights. And as Councilmember Rinaldi mentioned, the Stonewall riots, recognizing the ongoing struggle for equality is extremely important. And so tonight in Millbrae, we celebrate our vibrant LGBTQI commission in our community and which enriches our city with creativity and strength. And so as we accept this proclamation, let's remember that our work is far, far from over. We must continue advocating for LGBTQ rights, and visibility is extremely important. So we thank you very much for this proclamation, and it's an honor to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, both Commissioners. Would you like to join us at a podium, please? Thank you. All right. Thank you for joining us, everybody. And also proclaiming June 19, 2025, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day. We also have our Vice Mayor for us today, a few words.
Thank you. Whereas Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, holds great historical and cultural significance as a commemoration of the emancipation of enslaved African-Americans. On June 19, 1865, Union General Gordon Granger led troops into Galveston, Texas to announce the end of the Civil War and the end of slavery, two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation. Whereas in June 2021, Juneteenth has been recognized as a federal holiday by President Biden. And the city of Millbrae recognizes the profound importance of Juneteenth and its representation of liberation, resilience, and the relentless pursuit of equality. Juneteenth has been celebrated since 1866, representing a critical turning point in American history. As those who were formerly enslaved were recognized for the first time as citizens, African-Americans came to commemorate Juneteenth with celebrations across the country. Whereas Juneteenth commemorates African-American freedom and achievement while encouraging continuous self-development and respect for all races as it takes on a national, symbolic, and global perspective and appreciation for all cultures. And whereas the Millbrae community and everyone across the nation should continue to recognize the importance of inclusion for all races, ethnicities, and nationalities, and work together toward equity by equitably expanding cultural, economic, educational, and career opportunities for all. And now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2025, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day. We encourage all citizens to become aware of the significance of this celebration in American history and in the heritage of our nation and state. We invite the community to join us at a Juneteenth celebration in partnership with the city of San Bruno on Saturday, June 7, starting at 11:00 AM at San Bruno City Park. Also, please join us for the city's Juneteenth Flag-Raising Ceremony, where the Juneteenth Flag will be raised on June 19, 2025, at 10:00 AM at the Millbrae Civic Plaza in front of the Millbrae Library. Thank you.
And we're very glad to have this evening our very own 2022 Millbrae Volunteer of the Year and also our own Millbrae Recreation Leader, Paul Harrell, joining us this evening. Paul.
Well, definitely good evening, and guys, keep the energy going up there also, okay? Thank you. So it's truly an honor to talk about Juneteenth National Freedom Day. Juneteenth is more of an historical moment, is a living reminder of the resilience and strength and the enduring contributions of the Afro-Americans back in the day. It marks the day when the last enslaved people in the county finally learned of their freedom and found two of the half a million years of emancipated proclamation times. As acknowledged, Juneteenth here in Millbrae will also affirm our shared commitment to justice, equity, and community. I am grateful to the City Council, also in recognition, standing in solidarity and celebration of Black freedom and culture and progress. Thank you for this great honor, and keep that energy going for our future enrollment and future unity and respect. Thank you much.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you so very much for joining us. Would you please join us up here? Paul?
Are you sure?
I could not be more sure. Next up, we have a commendation recognizing our own very much volunteers who spent many, many years doing this already, and I'm always thankful for them helping our seniors. For the AARP Tax Aid Volunteers, and we have Councilmember Bob Nguyen.
Whereas AARP Foundation Tax Aid has provided free in-person and virtual tax assistance with the special focus on taxpayers who are over 50 years of age or have low to moderate income since 1968. And whereas AARP Foundation Tax Aid volunteers are trained and IRS-certified every year to be knowledgeable on the latest changes and additions to the tax code. And whereas AARP Foundation Tax Aid assisted the city of Millbrae staff in offering in-person tax aid appointments to residents in Millbrae. And whereas in 10 short weeks, the AARP Foundation Tax Aid was able to help 208 individuals with their tax returns. And whereas these clients were assisted in claiming over $108,410 in federal funds and a total of $21,258 in state refunds. And whereas this program not only eases financial burdens, on also fosters community engagement and goodwill. Now, therefore, we, the members of Millbrae City Council, do hereby congratulate and commend AARP Foundation Tax Aid.
And specifically, I also wanted to call out some of the volunteers who, every year, come out into the recreation center and be able to help all of our seniors with their taxes. And we have Foundation Tax Aid District Volunteer Mira Rubin. Would you please join us? Oh, okay. All right. And we also have Jim Ko. We have Jean Wong, Catherine Danes, Catherine Deveraux, Lisa Duncan, and Selena Quan. We're very thankful for all your volunteerism, and we have certificates for your volunteerism. Would you please join us up at a podium, please? Okay. Thank you, all the volunteers on the AARP. And speaking about volunteerism, we have tonight also a special commendation recognizing Tom Brokaw, who has been many, many years served as our CERT volunteer coordinator and also as a trainer. And tonight, we have Councilmember Rinaldi making that request. Thank you so very much for bringing this forward. Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor Feng. It's only appropriate to pay tribute to Tom Brokaw in the two years of volunteering that he's done for our CERT. Not only have you made Millbrae safe, you've made Hillsborough, Burlingame, and other neighboring communities within our region safe. Can say surely that during the last CERT graduation, can't remember how many people it was, but it was about a handful that weren't even from Burlingame, Hillsborough, or Millbrae. So the word's out, Tom, the great job you're doing with CERT, and you're bringing them in from all over the place. So with that being said, we want to commend you on your two years of volunteering as a CERT coordinator, and you're leaving a very high bar, my friend, and some big empty shoes to fill. So thank you from the bottom of our hearts for keeping us safe and prepared.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Now, obviously, go ahead. No good deeds goes unpunished. So we have tonight Central County Fire Department Community Risk and Resilience Specialist, Dina Gunning, would like to say a few words. Dina?
Thank you, Mayor Feng and Councilmembers. Tom may have been the CERT volunteer coordinator for the last couple of years, but he's been part of the Millbrae CERT program for 15-plus years, as far as I can count. And it just goes way beyond that. He's retired from our USGS, our United States Geological Survey, and really has truly brought preparedness and earthquake safety to our program in a whole different light. And so, Tom, we really appreciate all of your years of not only instruction but expertise in your field, and we are going to miss you dearly. We know you're not going too far. You're just, I can't even say across the pond, you're across the bridge, so you're at least close by. But again, thank you so much for all of your years of dedication. It is much appreciated, and I know our communities are a lot more resilient due to your expertise. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dina. Just, Tom, also wanted to commend you, not only you spend your career in geological survey, observing the country, but also after, even after the USGS service, you come to Millbrae and you continue to serve us as a volunteer and bring the wealth of knowledge and your dedication, helping those, you know, who may or may not necessarily be aware of all the challenges within our community, you know, in terms of emergency preparedness and many other things. And seeing you day in, day out, in every CERT booth, in every event the city holds. And every year, we have these graduations, we always see you there as well. It's always wonderful to see members of our own community dedicating and committing ourselves to serving those who are next to us. So truly, thank you very much for your volunteerism and your service to our community. Tom Brokaw, ladies and gentlemen. We'd like to give you a chance to rebuttal.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for those very kind remarks, and thank you, Council, for this very nice recognition. I would say that Millbrae is very blessed to have a large group of dedicated CERT volunteers who spend a lot of time helping to teach CERT classes, who work at up to 12 city events every year, and who take monthly additional training to improve their skills when the disaster strikes Millbrae. So it's been a real pleasure for me to serve as a volunteer coordinator for Millbrae, and I think you're in good hands. I want to give a shout out to Bill Riley, who's the city's emergency services coordinator, for helping us to organize a really dynamic CERT team. And it's been, as I say, a real pleasure and honor, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Tom, would you please join us for a bit of a photo? Yes. All right. Next up, we also have Seminole County Sheriff's Office and a Millbrae Traffic Safety Presentation. Talk a little bit about our traffic safety in e-bikes and scooters. Thank you so much for joining us. We have our Sheriff's Office Deputy Austin Silver joining us this evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'll introduce myself. I'm Deputy Austin Silva. Been in the sheriff's office about five and a half years. I started my career on patrol in Millbrae. I promoted to the motor unit. I went to our headquarters, where I worked in Woodside, and then about seven months ago, I got to come back to Millbrae as the motor. This is the former motor of Millbrae, Sergeant Lennon.
Well, again, everybody. Just recently, like less than a year ago, I left here, recently promoted. So I spent about four years here. It was fantastic, four years to be here. I did a lot of traffic enforcement while I was here, a lot of education. I even worked with public works, and we did a little bit of engineering. So it was a great time that I had here. I'm a little happy to be back, kind of supporting our new deputy here.
Today, I want to talk about pedestrians, e-bikes, and e-scooter safety. It's something I see often, especially working in multiple areas within our county as a motor. I see a lot of issues that come up with pedestrians, e-bikes, and e-scooters. So we'll start with pedestrian safety. So I have some vehicle codes in here. You don't have to memorize them. However, so 21950 subsection A of the California Vehicle Code is you have to yield to a pedestrian in a crosswalk. And so there's some key points with this. So here, we have a crosswalk right here, and there's this cement piece in the middle. In the eyes of traffic, the cement piece is a In the eyes of traffic, the cement piece is a place of safety for a pedestrian. It's also a good point for a pedestrian to stop and make sure traffic actually sees you prior to entering the roadway. When the pedestrian is on the side where he's walking right now, traffic going the opposite direction is okay to proceed. However, as we see right here, this vehicle is stopped for the pedestrian in the crosswalk in the appropriate area. There is a subsection of 21-950B, which actually do care of the pedestrians. With that being said, pedestrians cannot just walk out in front of traffic. I know there's a misconception, and it's taught all throughout your driving education, that pedestrians always have the right of way. However, 21-950B states that pedestrians have to do it with due caution. They can't just proceed out in front of a vehicle, and if they cause an accident, they could be at fault for that collision. Things I see often with this is cell phones. We're in a day and age of technology, cell phones, people are glued to their cell phones. Things people don't realize is earbuds. Earbuds don't allow you to hear traffic. Hearing traffic's a huge part of safety, because if you can hear the traffic, we all know what a car sounds like that's speeding or traveling at a higher rate of speed. So walking without earbuds, or just one earbud, is what I would recommend for your safety as a pedestrian. We have 21-456 of the vehicle code, which is the walk slash don't walk signals. When that red hand is solid, if someone proceeds out into an intersection, they're actually in violation of this as a pedestrian. It's something I see again often here, people just decide to cross. I know California has recently changed this law with like just being able to walk. However, there's still the due regard. However, if it impedes traffic, the pedestrian can be issued a traffic citation. I see this around daylight savings every year is the sunlight. When we're traveling westbound, I know we're all probably thinking about it right now, as the sun starts to set at different times, the sun will reflect into vehicles. We see it often on Broadway and Taylor, Hillcrest and Taylor, and Magnolia and Broadway as well. If you cannot see because of the sunlight, you actually can be issued a citation for the violation of 22-350, which is unsafe speed. Unsafe speed's a very broad vehicle code section, where if you're driving in a way that can get too fast for the roadway or unsafe for conditions is what it outlines. And another thing we see is as it comes winter time, people's windshields are frosted over. I encourage everyone, prior to driving your car in the morning, let your windshield defrost fully. I know a lot of times, and we see it all the time, where people will just wait for the little part that they can see out of on their side to defrost and start driving, and they hope for it to get fully defrosted by the time they get where they need to go. So please, if you guys can not drive until it's defrosted, it'd be very beneficial in terms of our accidents. So we have types of e-bikes. I know a lot of the e-bikes look alike, and it's not easy to recognize. This is more of an education. If you're thinking of buying your grandchildren, your kids an e-bike, there's just some things to think about prior to buying one. Types of e-bikes, we have Class 1 and Class 2. So Class 1 is an e-bike that can be pedaled and electric assisted with a top speed of 20 miles an hour, and at any age you can ride one of these. However, Class 2 e-bike also tops out at 20 miles an hour. However, they can be fully throttle assisted with no pedaling at all. These types of e-bikes fall under vehicle code 312.5A2, if you're wanting to look them up. They have to follow the rules of the road when riding an e-bike. However, under the age of 16, is allowed to ride bicycles on the sidewalk, and they are required to wear a helmet. We have Class 3 e-bikes. Class 3 e-bikes are electric assisted with a top speed of 28 miles an hour with a speedometer on them. However, these e-bikes can be manipulated, the battery can be changed and make them a lot faster. However, anything over 28 miles an hour falls under that vehicle code I talked about earlier of unsafe speed. If they're traveling over 28 miles an hour on a Class E bike, 3 e-bike, they can be in that violation. These, again, require all the lighting equipment, a front light, a rear light, they have to have the speedometer, they have to have reflectors on the pedals. Under the age of 16, you are not allowed to ride a Class 3 e-bike. I see these often on El Camino. These, this brand is specifically called a Siron. Siron's are not legal on the roadway. These are essentially an electric dirt bike that if people have been classifying as an e-bike. They're supposed to have a maximum speed of 30 miles per hour, have to be properly licensed and insured on a roadway. However, these are easily modified, and a lot of videos show people modifying these and going up to 80 miles an hour. They're marketed as a 30 mile an hour bike, however, there's different ways that people can easily modify them, that's all over the internet and easy way to get to. So I encourage you that if you are going to purchase one of these, just know it's meant to be used on private property. Motorized scooters, this is becoming a big trend as well, we see it all the time. They're a two-wheeled device with handlebars and a floorboard. What people don't know is you either have to have a learner's permit or a driver's license in order to operate on a roadway. If you're under the age of 16, which is 15 and a half, and you have your learner's permit, you're required to wear a helmet. The e-scooters are very popular here in Millbrae. I see them often at a lot of elementary schools. If you have a child or a grandchild in elementary school, and they have friends that ride e-scooters, or if you have a chance to talk to parents and help spread the word, I know I want to reach out to the schools and spread this as well. They're not allowed to ride them. I'm not, I'm not personally taking enforcement on children, however, I want to educate the public in order to make it safer for them to travel. I know everyone's wondering, what do we do to combat these issues? So we have saturated traffic enforcement program, which we commonly refer to as STEP. STEP is several agencies within the county, one time a month, we all get together and we focus usually on two cities, where we'll hammer different types of traffic enforcement. We have what we call mini saturation. Mini saturation is just the sheriff's office motors, which is five to about seven of us will go out to one of our cities with contracted motors, and we'll, we'll focus on traffic enforcement in that city. We'll often, we'll often take requests that we've heard throughout the citizens where there's problem issues, and that's where we'll really focus on those areas as well. We also do through the Office of Traffic Safety details, like pedestrian details, where we'll actually measure out the safe distance for stopping for a pedestrian and make sure people are yielding in these problematic areas. We also have routine patrol. Our patrol deputies that aren't just specifically assigned to traffic are out there doing traffic enforcement as well. We like to do education through social media posts, presentations like this. I put this up here so we can get online if anyone needs to look at it. It's just some of the required equipment that's required for e-bikes and the motorized scooters and mopeds and things like that. It's online, I believe, through the city council meeting, if anyone would like it. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Any questions for me at this time?
Thank you so much, deputy. You know, this is always good to know how to keep saving the community and traffic safety, you know, as well as I do, as many members of the community during public comment in the past have said how important public safety and as far as traffic safety is. So thank you very much for bringing all of this to the forefront of our discussion. Anyone else on the county, I mean, on the council would like to have any questions for our deputies? Councilmember Rinaldi?
Thanks for the info. It's quite enlightening to see the details, like as pedestrians, we take it for granted, we just see these things happen and you guys take care of it. But with that said, though, I did notice on Broadway, for example, these e-scooter bikes going quite fast, possibly modified. Could you kind of walk us through what kind of enforcement you do on that type of situation?
Yeah, so a lot of times I'll pace like e-scooters, e-bikes on like El Camino. Broadway's a little bit harder with the pedestrian traffic and vehicle traffic. However, required lighting equipment, you know, not stopping for stop signs, not following the rules of the road, often will result in a traffic stop from not only myself, but a lot of patrol units. So if we see something in violation, if I see something in violation on those, a lot of times it's a kid, and it's a great opportunity for me to educate instead of giving them a ticket, because often we know if we give a 14-year-old the ticket, it's the parents that end up paying for it. So a lot of times if it's, it's speeding on Broadway, and I'm going to make the traffic stop and ultimately find out that they're young, we can always call the parents as well, too, and that's, that's a strategy I've used and I've found to be effective is getting the parents involved, educating parents as well.
What would you recommend, just bystanders like us, would you recommend any action or just not take any action?
I wouldn't take any action. You can always call non-emergency line if there's something that needs to be addressed in that sense. I've never encouraged the public to take immediate action on something like that. That's something you can always bring up to us. You can bring it up to me as a traffic unit, and if it's a problem in that area, I'll go out there and I'll make time and saturate that area. If it's a bigger problem than I can handle on my own, we have our mini saturations where I'll bring other units in from our various agencies and take care of it that way.
Thanks.
I think you bring up, I'm sorry, I think you bring up a great point. I think it's super important to realize that when I took over here in Millbrae a couple years ago, four or five years ago, we had an incredibly large issue with vehicle versus pedestrian accidents. Over the course of several years, we implemented all the crosswalks that we have on El Camino, they're well lit, they're signaled, and that severely decreased that. So we've actually put in a lot of work to do that. It's super important right now just to be educated and have our public be educated. One of our biggest concerns that we always talk about is just wearing helmets is probably going to bring down injuries so much, just educating kids to wear helmets. I know my parents used to be like, hey, go out, wear your helmet when you ride your bike. It's now even super more important because these guys are doing 20, 30 miles an hour. The other thing is to realize that fortunately or unfortunately, we're not alone. This is a statewide problem. I know plenty of other cities are having the exact same issues with e-bikes. I know many of our ally agencies are like, hey, what are you guys doing? So while we should progress and be forward-thinking and try to come up with our own solutions, I think it's super important to look at other cities and see what's working for them and what's not working for them. It's, again, a conversation that statewide is being held, and we're just trying to figure out our own solution. It's a great question, and we get it all the time.
Councilmember Rinaldi.
Thank you very much for the presentation, very informative. I just had a real quick question in regards to the e-bikes, pocket bike category. You mentioned having to have insurance and a classification firm, like a, was it a driver's license or? I'm trying to understand, because I do see them on the road every once in a while, and I'm not sure if that's quite legal or not.
Yes, so the pocket bikes and like the Siron's that you see quite often, probably going down El Camino, I'd imagine, are not legal to be on the roadway. They actually have to be licensed, which most of all, I've never seen one that is licensed, and no one's taken the proper steps in order to actually license them, to actually ride them on the roadway.
So it's a matter of licensing them so you can use them on the roadway?
Yes, and getting all the proper equipment, like after, it's essentially a motorcycle, you'd have to register it as a motorcycle, go through the DMV inspection, all that stuff, which a lot of people don't want to do, they don't want to take the time to actually make the vehicle legal for the roadway.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, thank you, council member. Anyone else? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you very much for the presentation. You know, at the bicycle rodeo, actually, I spoke with Captain Allen, and he had mentioned that your office was looking into purchasing a couple of e-bikes for deputies to be able to do patrols, which I think is a great idea. I think it'll get around the downtown, get around the parks, the schools, different areas around Millbrae, since we're a fairly small city. Do you know when those are planning to be deployed?
Well, we were just discussing that, actually, not too long ago. We are still looking at purchasing them. There's actually some companies that outfit them fully, and we have a proposal process that we have to go through, which is something I was going to bring up. Yeah, we are looking to get the e-bikes that have the lights and the sirens on them, so we can do enforcement that way, and it'd really help in the downtown area to be able to get those. It's just a matter of finding the right company that can outfit them properly for us at this time, and then going through the purchase process.
Great.
We are shooting for the end of the year.
By the end of the year, great, that sounds good. And a question for legal counsel, is it appropriate at this time to make general questions about traffic safety that are not necessarily enforcement-related or pedestrian safety?
To, to?
To the city staff, yeah.
Sure.
Just a comment, a request that I received the other day was regarding the pedestrian crossing at Poplar and Millbrae Avenue over by the skate park. I know it's a, the city did some work a few years back to narrow the intersection, make it more pedestrian-friendly, but I've received comments that drivers still go through fast. It's right near Mills High School, so it's a common area where people are trying to walk to school or walk to the skate park or to the fitness court. Magnolia and Millbrae is over there nearby as well, so a lot of amenities in the area. I think it would make sense to perhaps have one of the, you know, touch signal crossings there, so if that's something that we could look into, I think that would be a good location for it. That's all I have for now, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Councilmember C.C. Riley?
Thank you so much for our share of work so hard to keep our children and our community safe. We all highly appreciate, thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds good. All right, thank you so much, deputy. Appreciate you coming by today and giving us all the rundown.
Thank you again for your guys' time.
All right. All right, moving on to agenda overview and staff briefing, would you please provide a city update, City Manager Tom Williams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the city council. This is Tom Williams, City Manager. I'm going to have Lane turn on my mic. Everybody can hear me okay? All right, thank you. Right out of the gate here, I'm just, I'm very pleased and honored to present this evening to the city council and the community three awards of distinction from the Silicon Valley American Public Works Association. Our staff was present at the luncheon last week, but of the three awards, the Marina Vista Park Renovation Project won the Project of the Year. This is in the Environmental Parks Division for projects less than $2 million, and so here it is, the Project of the Year recognized by Silicon Valley American Public Works Association. So, great job. Second award was the Near Shore Outfall Construction Project. This is an important project, especially during storms, when our sewer treatment plant has extensive INI, which is an infiltration from the storm system that we need to release water into, into the bay. We shared a pipe with the city of Burlingame. This project for the near shore outfall actually improves our ability to increase our capacity during, during times of storm. And so this also won Project of the Year in the utility category, so just another fantastic job. And then lastly, our drought tolerant landscaping project, which was a grant that was funded through the state of California, our sustainable planting and drought tolerant planting out in front of city hall, the police station, the fire station, won the Sustainable Green Drought Tolerant Landscaping Project of the Year Award. So three projects this year from our engineering department, and they need to recognize the staff. I think some of them are here. Of course, our city engineer Ahmad Hyatt, our associate engineer Armando Mora, associate engineer Mir Zika, associate engineer Nicole Tandell, our public work superintendent Craig Centus, our park supervisor John Gianoli, our recreation director Hannah Moran, and also our environmental specialist Annabelle Acosta. So some of the key staff members that have worked on these three projects. And so my hat's off to just a great job and great recognition from APWA here in the city of Millbrae for these three projects. So we'll hang these plaques up here at city hall, so really, really a nice effort. And of course, the council for approving the projects and allocating the budgets and, and moving these projects forward, so a big thank you to everyone. Also, last week, Millbrae again was named a Tree City USA. This is the Arbor Day Foundation's 2024 Tree City USA Honor. It's a commitment to the city of Millbrae that we, you know, plant trees, help mitigate the urban heat island effect, reduce stormwater runoff, improve air quality, boost mental and physical health. When the right trees are planted in the right places, they can also reduce traffic noise, increase property values, and lower energy costs for homeowners. So again, city of Millbrae. So again, city of Millbrae was recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation as a Tree City USA for 2024. Also, I think everyone knows, because of the popularity of Trader Joe's and the businesses on that side of Broadway, the One Metal Glen project is under construction. There's going to be a significant, a major concrete pour scheduled for June 7th, Saturday, and then also June 28th. So this is a notice to, to let everybody know that the lanes on El Camino Real will be reduced from three lanes to one lane, basically starting on the northern border of the city of Millbrae and the southern border of San Bruno for southbound traffic, moving from three lanes to one lane. The vehicles, the, the concrete vehicles will, will start at 3:00 a.m. and go to 5:00 p.m. those days. So there's going to be a significant narrowing of the traffic lanes on El Camino Real. Again, that's Saturday, June 7th, and then June 28th for, for a significant concrete pour. So if you go out and look, you can see all the Mount Foundation and Rebar and how significant this construction project is. So we'll continue to provide notice to the community and keep them aware. Also, our PCE grant for the incentive program for battery-operated electric landscape equipment. It's been so popular that 116 residential rebates and three commercial rebates were funded. The program for the remainder of this year is, is out of money. So we'll be seeking another grant from PCE. But just wanted to recognize what a successful program this has been so people can take their lawn equipment that is gas-powered, purchase it, provide the receipt to the city, and we have a $200 rebate as an incentive. So a very successful program that we hope will continue to, to be funded through that PCE partnership that we have. Also, our commission and committee recruitment continues. We've extended the application deadline to May 28th. Again, the, these are various commissions and committees. We have nine of them. Community enhancement advisory committee, cultural arts advisory committee, economic development advisory committee, Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, senior advisory committee, sister cities commission, youth advisor committee, and a newly formed citizen oversight committee for our 2% increase in our TOT and the fire assessment that was passed by the voters last year. So if anybody's interested in making a difference and, and being part of the improvements here at the city of Millbrae and, and, and hearing or having their voice heard, recommendation to the city council, please take a look. You can log on to our website at the city of Millbrae on our homepage and the city clerk has all the information listed. Okay, upcoming community events. A week from yesterday, June, or, yeah, a week from tomorrow, June 2nd, which is next Monday, is the sixth annual mayor's cup golf tournament. This is a Rotary Club-sponsored event in association with the city of Millbrae. Registration is open. I, I think they're all full. Is that right, Hannah? Okay, so no more registration. So if you know somebody that's looking for somebody to run out there for some, tap them on the shoulder. But this is a great fundraiser, as I've mentioned. Averages, you know, $11,000 to $15,000 back to the city of Millbrae that we use for youth scholarship funds, both in sports and the arts. So it's a great fundraiser for the city. Also, as recognized tonight, we have also a pride flag raising, which is Friday, June 6th. That's a week from this Friday. This is in collaboration Samhita, Samhita County LGBTQIA+ Commission. We'll host the pride flag raising at 1:30 p.m. This is out at the Civic Center Plaza, which is the flagpole between the library and the David J. Chakuti Room. So 1:30 p.m. flag raising on June 6th. And then we have movie night returns. That is Friday, June 13th. This is our first movie for the season outdoors at Central Park. The movie will start at sunset. And I think people are still voting on the selection of the movie. So that's always a great time for the community to come out and enjoy movie night on a Friday night outdoors. And again, that is Friday, June 13th. So mayor and council, that is a brief update of what's happening. And moving to the agenda, Mr. Mayor. Item number 10, we had received several requests if the city council would consider moving item number 10 to the front of the agenda. And item number 10 is the introduction and we have the first reading of an ordinance adding chapter 4.95 to title four of the city of Millbrae municipal code regarding public encampments.
Okay, very well. Thank you so much for the city update. Anyone on the council have any questions for our city manager? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to approval minutes. We have the closed session meeting minutes on May 13, 2025, and also the regular meeting minute of the same day. Any council comments?
Actually, yes.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I noticed what appears to be a typo. At the end of item 13, it says council recessed at 9:36 p.m. and resumed at 10:40, 46 p.m. I think it was, should be 10:36 and 10:46, right? And also in public comment, I think both general public comment and the, for item 13, there was a member of the public identified as Yaseed. I believe we do have his last name because I think he was a member of that committee. Astro, I think.
Staff will look into that and then we'll make the appropriate updates.
Okay. You want to bring it back later on? You think it's okay to?
Can we, can we approve just with?
With the changes notion?
On some of the changes?
Sure. Happy to do so. You want to make a motion?
Sure. Second that.
I think we're using this today, right? Mr. Vice Mayor, would you like to make a motion? Using the, there you go. All right, any final comment? All right. Any public comment on this item? No, okay, all right. Go ahead, your votes, please.
All right, the two set of minutes, May 13th, 2025. The closed session is approved as is in regular meeting minutes. Will be with changes as mentioned by the vice mayor, passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you very much. We don't have any oral report from city committees and commission chair this evening, which now takes us to public communication. And this portion of the agenda is reserved for those who wish to comment on any item not appearing on tonight's agenda. However, speaker must address subject matters within the jurisdictions of the city council. Each speaker will have three minutes. The speaker is to address directly to the entire council and not individual council members nor to the public. We will have, we have five speakers tonight, and we will begin with Aaron Wong and Samantha Nguyen. Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Samantha Nguyen. I am a current board member on the Millbrae Leos Club. And we are here to thank our city council for allowing us to extend our hours on our in-house plastic baler. This has not only helped us now, but will continue to help future generations of Leos here in Millbrae. Because of your help, Leos will, can continue their efforts helping the community. For this, we thank you all.
Good evening, esteemed mayor and city council. My name is Aaron Wong. I am a member of the Millbrae Leos Club. I would like to thank all of you, not only for your time, but for your dedication and effort in working together with the Leos Club, specifically with our plastic baler project. I truly believe that through combined efforts like this, we can continue to help and improve our community at an exponential rate. And this is really important because we can also let our youth know that they can make a difference because they are our future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We now have Vincy Wong and Aria Green.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Vincy Wong.
And I am Aria Green.
And we are members of the Millbrae Leos Club. We are here tonight to thank you for your incredible support of our plastic baler project. Project is a great chance for us to help the environment and it wouldn't have been possible without your support. It shows us that Millbrae really cares about young people and taking care of our planet.
Being a part of the Leos Club is special because not only do we learn new things, we also meet great people and get to do projects that help our community. It feels good to be a part of something bigger and your support makes it even more meaningful. Thank you again for your support and continuing to believe in us and the work we are doing.
Thank you for your comments. We now have Han Law and Aaron Sadoff.
Hello, I'm Han Law and I'm a member of the Leos Club. And I would like to pay my respect and gratitude to the Millbrae district for supporting many of our events, the biggest being the plastic baler. Many of our events couldn't have happened without your support towards our club. So thank you so much for your help and support for our club.
Hello, I'm Ari Sadoff from the Millbrae Leos Club. I would just like to thank the city of Millbrae and our amazing city council for their effort and assistance. We have recently been working on a plastic recycling project to reduce waste in our community. And the help of the city has been very valuable to us. They have been accommodating our needs in order to make it as easy as possible for us to launch this project. Thank you to the city of Millbrae and I'm excited to see the growth of the Millbrae Leos Club with your support.
Thank you very much for your comment. We now have Joey Sito and Anthony Friss.
Hello, I would like to say good evening to the city council and my name is Anthony Friss. I would first like to say this is a major step for not just the Millbrae Leos, but the city, city of Millbrae as well, due to the major problem of plastic pollution in our world. As the internal secretary of the Millbrae Leos, I'm one of the main personnel that helps pick up plastics from different businesses. These businesses that we are partnered with is Lululemon, CVS, and many more. With most of these pickups being on weekends, I need, I need to store these plastics in my house. Now, having multiple days, this allows for many people like me who aren't able to store all the plastics in our house to find a safe and clean place to throw them away. And because of this, I would like to say thank you as part of the Leos Club. We thank you for cooperating with us as young adults.
Good evening, esteemed mayor and Millbrae city council. I am Joey Situ and I'm a senior from Mills High School and I have had the honor of serving as the president of the Millbrae Leos Club. And I am extremely grateful to have had the opportunity to speak before you today, a room full of dedicated public servants who I aspire to be like. I would like to thank each, each of you in this room. Thank you for believing in the power of the youth, for helping us find solutions at every turn, and for contributing to the success our Leos Club has claimed this year, especially going to be the largest Leo club in the world with 223 members as of today. Our membership growth, I believe, is attracted by this plastic baler project, having students see the impact it has made and will continue to make, keeping plastic out of landfills and micro, microplastics out of the air we all breathe together. I'm extremely thankful for the loyal and constant support the city council has given our club these last years. As president, I've seen this club fall and rise and fall again, each time coming back stronger and more resilient. This club has taught me the value of not giving up, to keep pushing for what I know is right, and to strive for what I believe is the best for the planet we all inhabit. And I hope that all my fellow Leos found similar lessons. Through this club, I have had the pleasure of meeting the hopeful and determined youth of Millbrae. And I'm excited to leave the club in the hands of students who know when to push back and when to find a new path and in the hands of a city that is shaped by the support and partnership that this council has provided. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. We now have Michael Kelly.
It's so nice to be here. Thank you, esteemed mayor, esteemed city council. My name is Michael Kelly. I had been resident of Millbrae. I'm currently a volunteer with the Millbrae Lions Club, very proudly wearing my Leo advisors badge. And I just do want to take a moment here representing Lions and Leos. The shirt I'm wearing is my own views, that no one is illegal when we're walking on stolen land. And we are walking on native land. This is my personal belief, many in the Lions and Leo share it, but it is not the club position. So I want to be very mindful of that and not lead anyone to construe that I'm representing that. I couldn't be prouder of Leos tonight. They've accomplished amazing things. I could not get some parts done of this project. And they came to talk to you, city council, you know, some weeks, a couple of months ago. And within a week, we had a place the community could bring the plastic for this project. It's amazing. So they're here tonight to thank you. I'm here to thank you. It's something that Leos, for anyone that doesn't know, this is addressed to council, but it's leadership, experience, opportunity, and service. They embody that fully. Millbrae has a hat to hang on the Leos. I don't know of Millbrae ever being the best in the world at something. And the Millbrae Leos are legitimately best in class of the world's largest volunteer organization. So this was going to be kind of a love sandwich. There's going to be Leos on each side of me and I'm going to come in and kind of like, be a little bit of, I don't know, bitter mustard or something. But a last couple asks. I'm winding down my time as a Leo advisor. End of June, I'm out. Lion Angelina Cahalan will be the advisor. I'm still going to help and work. But what I respectfully request from city council, please give guidance and instruction to our city staff, Department of Public Works, to publicize the fact that the community can bring plastic to the bins at the baler, water treatment facility, 400 East Millbrae. I, I've left messages, haven't heard back, but we have a city website. We have Simplicity the app. We have our Instagram page. We have the electronic billboard. The city has the platform to let the community know. Millbrae Leos know how to market. They're the, they've been voted the top marketing organization in all of LCI. That's, again, a million volunteers. They grew their membership in one year from 185 members to Joey's a little bit behind by two days. We're now at 230 members. We grow every month. And in that capacity, the partnership with the city and the partnership with the city staff, city manager, Lion Tom Williams, has been amazing and it's enabled all of that to happen. So please help publicize that, socialize that, give them the instruction from city council that, hey, this is a good thing. I would also ask in my last few seconds, you went from one Wednesday a month to first and third Saturdays for the public to come into an attendance station. Please open that so they can come in anytime the gates open, the plastic can get dropped off. Because South, South, South San Francisco Scavenger donated big bins. All the plastic can be communicated, collected. Thank you so much. We're very, very appreciative.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Thank you so much for your comments. All right, so I believe this is the end of public communication. Is there anybody online? Yes.
Mayor, there are no other hands raised.
Thank you so much. And that would bring an end to the public communication this evening. Moving on to consent calendar. I actually like to pull item number six from the consent calendar as I believe I shall be recusing, just like I did the first reading on this item. So I would like to pull item number six from the consent calendar. Anyone else want to pull any item from the consent? Nope, okay. All right, so we have item number five, receive and file monthly general fund financial report for the period ending April 30th, 2025. And we have item number seven, which is adoption of a resolution awarding a construction contractor pavement coating company for the 2025 street resurfacing project in the amount of $1,419,495. Any public comment on item five and item seven? Nope, okay, seeing none. I'd like to take a motion if anyone would like to make. Okay, we have a motion from councilmember Ronali and a second from councilmember Nguyen. And that's for item five and seven only. Your votes, please.
Consent, item number five and seven is approved by the vote of 5-0.
Thank you very much. Since I myself and I believe also councilmember Nguyen lives within the zoning, the hazard zone district for the following item, I will be relying on the expertise of our vice mayor to run this meeting on item number six.
Okay, thank you. And just for legal counsel, if there's not going to be any, unless there's any discussion about this, can they just stay in the room? If it's just going to be a quick vote?
No, they need to leave the room.
Okay. Don't go too far. It shouldn't take long. Okay, I'm going to clear the board. Okay, so on item six, do we have a motion?
Motion to move forward.
Okay. Make a second and can we vote, please?
Excuse me, Mr. Vice Mayor, would you like to take a public comment?
Oh, okay. Yeah, do we have any speaker slips on item six?
There's no speakers card on this item and there's no hand raised online.
Okay. So seeing none, let's proceed with the vote.
Okay.
Looks like it passed unanimously.
That's correct. So item number seven passed by a vote of 302 with Mayor Feng and also Councilmember Nguyen recused.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Moving on to item number 10, we're moving item number 10 forward in this agenda this evening. And this is the item that introduction and waived the first reading of an ordinance adding chapter 495 to Title IV of the City of Millbury Municipal Code regarding public encampment. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'd like to bring to the City Council's attention your purple folder. There's some public correspondence regarding this item that we had received. Now I'd like to introduce our Community Development Director, Mr. Andrew Mogensen, for the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. This is an ordinance adding chapter 4.95 to the Millbury Municipal Code regarding loitering in public encampments on public property, thoroughfares, and streets. Next slide, please. The ability for local governments to regulate and enforce homeless encampments was previously limited by a Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals ruling made in Martin versus City of Boise. The Supreme Court recently reversed that decision in the City of Grants Pass versus Johnson, which provided direction and enabled cities to constitutionally enforce public camping ordinances. The City of Millbury does not currently have an encampment ordinance. Addressing the health, safety, and general welfare pursuant to the law and Governor Newsom's directives for the unhoused is critical to improving quality of life for everyone. Next slide, please. So the proposed ordinance tonight is a tool that establishes a fair process that provides 24-hour advance notice before enforcement and abatement of encampments occurs. Establishes protocols for the collection and storage of belongings and provides information about their retrieval. It establishes enforcement for loitering activities. Having an encampment ordinance is an important tool to help maintain the safety, cleanliness, and accessibility of our public spaces. So with that, staff recommends the City Council waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance adding chapter 4.95 to the Millbury Municipal Code. Happy to answer any questions about the ordinance before you this evening.
Thank you very much, Director Mogensen. Any council comment or questions to begin this discussion? Seeing none, then I can open up the public comment and then we can come back for the council for further discussion. So item number 10, we have public comment from John Munis, followed by Vernon Bruce.
Thank you, Mayor Feng, City Council. John Munis, Millbury resident for over 30 years. I urge the City Council to update the City Municipal Code to restore the city's ability to remove unhoused encampments. Agenda item 10. Our city must play a crucial role in regulating and enforcing private property rights to maintain order, economic stability, and community well-being. Protecting property rights ensures that individuals and businesses can securely invest in land and infrastructure, fostering economic growth and development in Millbury. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Vernon Bruce.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Feng and council members. Been in the city either working or living here all of my life and over that period of time, I definitely encountered a few issues with homeless, both within my business, it's on El Camino, and the Train Museum that I have somewhat experience with down there. And I fully endorse the regulation and the enforcement of the regulation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Rose Kong, please. Followed by Stella Lau.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. My name is Rose. I live in Millbury for over 10 years. And I support the regulation and enforcement of public camping ordinance relating to the homeless and councilmen's.
Thank you very much. Stella Lau, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councils. It is important that we enforce regulation around public encampment to protect the safety, cleanliness, and overall well-being of our city. This isn't just about public safety. It is also a serious health concern that affect residents, business, and visitors. So I support the regulation and enforcement of public camping ordinary related to homeless encampments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Marion Kong.
Hi, all council members. Many of our residents cannot even come tonight because they work, they have families to deal with, so we collect some signatures. So the list I have here is actually from the local merchants. And then so all the names, I'm going to say it out loud, they are all supporting this particular ordinance that you are working on. So it's a Sasa Wedding, and then Judy Louis, Men Louis, and Ramal Vanderbeek, and then Amy Louis, and Vern Bruce is a Millbury Lock, and then Bobby Zane is the Yu Yi Jinsan Place, and Wendy Chan is the Stem and Leaf, Alice Mao TPT's Milk Tea Place, and Tiffany Liu Peter's Cafe, and Iris Zhang is the porridge and noodles, and then the Locker Restaurant in Broadway, and then Amin Wu Taiji, and Ida Choi, and also Sun's Market, the supermarket store, Chinese supermarket store, Yen Peninsula, and then Raymond Wan, and then Hu has the fantastic furniture store in Millbury. And then Xiaoming Wang is the Beef Noodle Place, Kevin Hu is the Seichuan Restaurant, and then also we have Urban Republic, Republic Urban, Gateway Station 16, and then Jack Feng, who owns that Old Taihu Building, and then we have Jacqueline Ho, the CPA has an office in Millbury. They are all encourage the council tonight to adopt this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kong. Judy Louis.
Good evening, everybody.
Could you get closer to the mic? Thank you. Thank you, Judy.
My name is Judy Louis. I support the regulation and enforcement of public camping related to homeless encampments. Here is some of the supporter names. David Louis, Calvin Yu, Nikki Wong, Irene Yu. Miss Louis. Tam Tam, Harry, Wendy Chan, Louis, Michael, Ida Choi, Mbakchi Hui Ma, Stella Lloyd, Irene Wei, Jennifer Ho, Jeffrey Ho, Wendy Chan, Imi Lin, Aki Moi, Robert Kong, Vivian Lee, Yan Fang Kong, India Tang, Michael Liang.
Ms. Louis, please speak into the mic.
Okay, sorry. And Nien Po Chang, Salem Tong, King Moi Tong, Tony Son, Sarah Ahn, Calvin Ah Young, Fireman Lu, Alan Lu, Calvin Yu, Jerry Yu, Eddie Poon, Peter Yang, Calvin Hui, Naomi Louis, Ryan Vanderbilt, Rose Kong, Ben, Andy Kong, Biggie Kong, Amy Kong, Alice Kong, and Robert Kong, Biffy Su, Danny Patton, Roberta Patton, Judy Lee, Denise Louis, Andy Su, Joe Chen, Jenny Chen, Anna Yu, Kathy Wong, Lee, Louis, Lee Wong, Colleen Lau.
Judy, thank you very much. Yeah, we got the idea. Yeah, we got the idea.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Before we call the online speaker, I just wanted to let the staff know, as City Manager, if you would, this letter that we received from the public with over 100 names on it in support of item number 10, I just want to make sure that it entered into the record and made available for public consumption, so the public understands these names that was being written and also being called out in a moment ago, and these are the ones who wish to see this item number 10, you know, supported tonight. So we're ready for the online speaker.
All right. We have three online speaker. The first speaker is iPhone. Please go ahead and accept the mute and state your name for the record. iPhone, please go ahead. Hello, please state your name for the record, please, iPhone.
Hi, this is Alice Kong. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, good evening. I support item 10 as it's very important for our city. You know, all the public area is a belong to the public. It doesn't belong to any single individual. So without any permit, anyone cannot occupy public area. It's very simple. So please, we all support item 10, and this is Alice Kong. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. The next speaker is C. Danucci. Please accept the mute and state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Christine Danucci. Can you hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Hi, I've lived here all my life in Millbury and I really want to help these people. I feel like I call a lot of times and, you know, they deserve a place to go to and not on the ground. So I really hope this ordinance goes through because it's really going to help our community. It's not fair to these people or fair to the people that live here. So we really need to take care of them, have them go into a facility or figure out to get clean and sober. But thank you and I really appreciate you guys working on this.
Thank you for the comments.
Thank you. The last speaker is Nancy, and Nancy, please accept the mute and state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Nancy Kane. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm in favor of the ordinance. As a community, we have the more responsibility to support the unhoused by helping them to get them in a better place and not have them living on the street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. And Mayor, that's all the public comment we have.
Thank you very much. And that is the end of public comment on item number 10. Bring it back to the council. Any council comment, questions for our staff? Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes, so, yes, questions for staff. I did a quick research on CEQA and I believe I have CEQA exemption, right, for this, or is that correct?
Correct. It's exempt from CEQA.
Okay, so the question is around like smooth implementation. There's, in my opinion, quite obvious benefits to public sanitation, but how do we navigate that CEQA exemption to make sure this potentially can be smooth if we do go for this?
I'm going to hand it over to the city attorney for the legal clarification. CEQA is the California Environmental Quality Act, and so this project doesn't fit into the definition of what would trigger a CEQA review.
Right, so CEQA applies if there is a project which has significant impacts on the environment, and this does not fall within that. It's exempt. So staff has determined that it is not subject to CEQA.
Okay. I was just, I'm just curious if, so there will be no complications, right, with CEQA? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comment, questions? Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Just for clarification, my understanding is that this ordinance was sort of modeled on the county's ordinance? Is that correct?
City Manager?
Yeah, so to answer that question, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, we worked very closely with Chief Allen and the Sheriff's Office to look at other ordinances up and down the state of California that really worked. The county's obviously one that we looked at. We didn't model it fully after the county. It was actually Chief Allen did some research and it was the City of Oceanside that we did some research and reached out to and really modeled this ordinance on the City of Oceanside. You'll see in this ordinance, it goes a little bit farther than the county because we define loitering and the public safety issue with people, you know, in a, for example, a center median on El Camino, which with this now gives the opportunity for deputy police officer to approach that person, work with them, get them the help they need, relocate them off the center median, for example.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we're pretty fortunate, Millbury encampments have not been as big of an issue here as they've been in some other cities nearby. As I said, I think it's important to have this tool so that in case something pops up, we can address it quickly, we can help get people the help that they need. You know, I don't think it's meant to be, you know, punitive measure. It's more a way to be able to connect with people who need services and to be able to better connect them to those services. So I think this is a positive step for the city. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, if I may, so also the noticing requirements, a little bit of comparison, the county in their ordinance is a 48-hour notice, ours is a 24-hour notice. The difference between the governor's draft model for the ordinance, for example, in the governor's ordinance, I also believe it's a 48-hour notice versus a 24. But the other difference is if people's personal property is confiscated during the implementation of this ordinance, it's a hold for 90 days versus the state of California, which is 60 days, so we have a 30-day longer hold. Those properties will be stored here at the Millbury Police Bureau. The Sheriff's Office, other staff members will work with those people that had their property confiscated so they can easily claim it and pick it up from the Sheriff's Bureau. claim it and pick it up from the Sheriff's Bureau here in the city of Millbrae.
Sorry, just to follow up on that, they have sufficient storage space here for storage of property? And what about, I don't know, if there's something unsanitary at the site? Assume we're not going to be storing, you know, waste or other items?
Yeah, that's.
How do we know what to store and what to dispose of?
You know, that's a great question. That's also one of the things that the governor addressed, so, for example, you know, moldy bedding, tarps, that type of thing. Ours doesn't really address that, but if it is a hazard, biohazard or something, it would be disposed of properly as we do currently today.
And I can chime in on that. So our ordinance has provision that says that if personal property poses an imminent threat to public health or safety, then it can be removed immediately and can be stored or destroyed in accordance with the ordinance. So if there's any health issues, it does not have to be stored.
Thank you.
And, and also, just to add on to what the city manager said a moment ago, the governor has issued what's called a model ordinance, just, it's not actually an enacted ordinance, but it's a model for cities to follow. And in the county, the county has an ordinance, and throughout this county, no other cities have yet enacted ordinances.
Okay, any questions? Okay, go ahead. Councilmember Rinaldi.
Thank you. Want to first thank all the wonderful people that gave public comment tonight and gave us your input regarding this ordinance. Also like to thank Chief Eamon Allen for your input on the ordinance, the Public Safety Subcommittee, Mayor Feng, which you also sit on, and most importantly, city staff for your due diligence when writing this ordinance. Just prepared a brief statement on it to summarize my thoughts. But this council's proposed ordinance on public encampments is a compassionate effort to balance community safety with dignity and fairness. Recognizing the complexity of homelessness, the ordinance prioritizes respectful enforcement rather than punitive action, ensuring individuals receive advance notice before any belongings are removed. By clearly defining encampment regulations and providing opportunities for compliance, the city aims to mitigate health and safety risks while maintaining clean and accessible public spaces. Most importantly, the ordinance aligns with broader state-led initiatives to address homelessness and emphasizes public welfare, seeking to protect both the individuals affected by homelessness and the greater community, fostering an environment where resources and solutions are pursued alongside enforcement efforts. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Anyone else? Councilmember Riley.
Thank you so much for our city staff. We work hard with closely with our sheriff, bringing this municipal code. And in the past few days, I receive calls, texts, and emails, all supported this, and it's good for Millbrae's city and business, and also good for homeless because they needed to go to the press, they can get a help. Therefore, I'm going to make a motion to pass this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Riley. Can you reset the board, please? City Clerk? Okay, here we go. Thank you. I just have a, I just have a brief comment. Thank your staff for bringing this forward, and thank you, Chief, for working with us, you know, getting this across the finish line hopefully tonight, as soon as we're done here. You know, I'm a big believer that, you know, homelessness should not be a way of life, right? Many folks fell into the web of homelessness because maybe they're down on the luck a little bit, maybe they lost their job, maybe they just got sick, or a little bit more trouble than they can handle at a given certain time. And once they fell into the web of homelessness, many other things kind of came in and perpetuated that cycle and make it difficult for folks to get out of it. And this is a way for us to help those who are in need. This is a way for us to help those individuals who may or may not necessarily know that they need help, may or may not necessarily know that there are help, and may or may not necessarily trust the help that we can give them. Because once those who are in a, on the street for five, 10 years and, and long, especially chronic homelessness, there's a lot of more difficult issues between substance, you know, abuse rehabilitations and, and mental health, and many others, in addition to affordable housings and job training and many others. This is a way for us to help those who are in need, especially those who may or may not necessarily know and how to get help. This is just putting the tools in our toolbox so that we can address these issues head-on. And this issue has sort of troubled our stay in our entire Bay Area for a long time, and it's time for us to have a solution and take a solution-oriented approach to really address it because, you know, we can no longer turn our face against this problem and really have to deal with this head-on and dedicate resources and time, and in this case, legislation that would help alleviate and hopefully at some point sooner or later, really get to functional zero homelessness, not only in the city but in the county, but as well as the rest of the state. So with that, I'm thankful for the staff and everyone who put together and the members of the community who speak out and help shape the policy of the city. And hopefully, this could also be something that the rest of the county, if not the rest of the state, can also, you know, be a part of and also leverage what we do tonight to hopefully really can, hopefully we can really address homelessness once and for all in the state of California. So with that, I'm happy to go for the votes. Councilmember Riley? All right.
Item number 10 passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you very much. And thank you for all the public who chimed in and helped shape this policy. All right, moving on to existing business on item number eight, adoption of a resolution approving a revised maximum garbage rate schedule in accordance with the franchise agreement with the South San Francisco Scavenger Company. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce our Senior Environmental Programs Manager, Ms. Andrea Papajon, for the staff presentation this evening.
Thank you, City Manager Williams. Mayor Feng, Vice Mayor Hallibur, City Council Members Andrea Papajon, City of Millbrae. Thank you for the opportunity to present the resolution approving the annual rate adjustment. Next slide, please. So in 2009, the City Council approved a new franchise agreement with South San Francisco Scavenger, and it was extended and due to expire in 2025. In October of 2024, last year, council approved an amendment to the franchise agreement for a, for an annually renewable contract with a 15-year term. And there were some additional services negotiated. I'll talk about those on the next page. The franchise agreement on section 8.2 requires that rates are reviewed and adjusted each year, with the new rates becoming effective on July 1st. Next slide, please. So in the amendment that was adopted in October of 2024, there were four new services negotiated that benefit our residents, businesses, and the city, and they are the multifamily cleanups for customers with multifamily accounts of 20 or less units. No charge drop-off for residents can bring in e-waste, cardboard, cooking oil, and other items at no charge. There's code enforcement roll-off boxes, so authorized city staff can schedule specialized collection boxes to help with, with residents that, that need assistance. And fourthly, the compost distribution, distribution of compost four times a year on our spur trail or another location for our residents to pick up. And so, as I mentioned, these are just really great benefits that are services that were added for our residents, businesses, and the city. Next slide, please. So the franchise agreement establishes a three-year cycle for rate adjustments. For the first two years, the rates are based on 80% of any changes in Consumer Price Index. And then the third year in the cycle, potential changes in rates are based on a rate survey of a pre-selected group of 32 cities. So this coming fiscal year 2526 represents the first year in the rate-setting cycle of the agreement, and so it allows for adjustments according to the CPI, which results in a 2.17% increase. Next slide, please. So this is a, an overview of some of the rates with the 2.17% increase, and the rate, the increase goes across the board on all the services. This is just an example of the, some five services with the monthly increase. Next slide, please. And for comparison of rates, you know, Millbrae rates are really below average. This was a study, a survey that was done late last year. It was commissioned by the South Bayside Waste Management Authority. And as you can see, the first row, City of Millbrae, are rates for various services across the row, and the bottom row, average of cities above, Millbrae rates are all below average, with the exception of the commercial one yard, one time per week. But I would like to just make a comment that the rates are, in Millbrae, are very competitive, and as you can see here, really below the average of all of these cities listed. Thank you. Next slide. Okay, so this table shows the fiscal impact of the rate increase and how this affects the city's fee revenues. So the revenues will be approximately 1.28305 million, and this is in Article V of the franchise agreement. It's the company's payment to the city. So these rate percentages, these franchise fees are agreed to in our franchise agreement. Next slide, please. So staff recommends the city adopt the resolution as required by the franchise agreement with the South San Francisco Scavenger Company for the collection and disposal of solid waste. Next slide. And that's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Papajon. Any questions or comment from this council? Seeing none, I don't have any speaker slip on this item. Anybody online? I don't see a hand raised either.
There's no hands raised online.
Okay, and in public comment on item number eight, bring it back to the council. Any further comment, discussions, or emotion? All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor and a second by myself. Any final comment on this item? Your votes, please.
Item number eight passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Papajon, for your presentation. All right, moving on. Item number nine, and it's the Water, Sewer, and Recreation Funds and Department Overview Study Sessions, presentation for the fiscal year 2025 to '26, and also the next fiscal year, '26 to ' '27. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce our Finance Director, Mr. Mike Sung, for a staff presentation. We also have department heads here in case there's any detailed questions, department by department. So, Mr. Sung.
Thank you, Director Mike Sung. Thank you, City Manager Williams. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, and Honorable City Council Members. Today we'll be talking about our fiscal year 2526 and '2627 Water, Sewer, and Recreation Funds, as well as our department overviews. This is the second of our budget study session series. First and foremost, we are looking at our council goals and priorities that were set, the strategic initiatives were based on the March 20th, 2025 goal-setting session. So that would include safe and clean cities, economic development with an emphasis on fiscal responsibility, infrastructure, sovereign city governance, and fiscal responsibility, and community engagement. Next slide, please. Operating budget, next slide. So the proposed water fund for a two-year budget cycle for fiscal year 2526, our revenues would be 14.3 million, operating expenditures of 11.3, and then capital expenditures about 5.7. And underneath the capital expenditures for '2526, we have some big-ticket items like the LaPrenda Water Tank and the water main replacements on Broadway. Some of these projects span multiple years, so they do get divvied up. Over the years, the water funds accumulated a fund balance, and that's going to be estimated around 4.7 million at the end of '25, uh, '2425, excluding the reserves of 2.5 million. We have a 15% reserve policy. For '2627, the revenues 15.2 million, operating expenditure of 11.6, and capital expenditure of 3.6. Slightly lower in '2627, it deals with the ebb and flow of the capital projects, and it's actually going to go back up in '2728. It just depends on the timing. We actually have a very big project coming in next year with LaPrenda, that's like a $4 million project. Next slide, please.
I'd like to, that's a LaPrenda Water Tank, for clarification.
Thank you. Sorry, can you go back one slide? Thank you. For the proposed sewer run, sewer fund summary, our fiscal year 2526 budget includes a 16.8 million in revenue, 14.4 in operating expenditures, and capital expenditures of about 8.5 million. That includes very big items as well, a portion of Madrone Pump Station, as well as the Hillcrest, that's like $4 million right there, plus the Skater Project as well. Over the years, the sewer funds also accumulated a fund balance, and that's estimated to be about 16.9 million at the end of '2425, excluding reserves of approximately 3.4 million, which is 15%. In '2627, our revenue is projected to be 17.5 million, operating expenditures of 14.7, and capital expenditures about 8 million. So we're looking at a lot of bigger projects in the near future. Next slide, please. So for our proposed recreation budget for '2526 and '2627, revenues and expenditures are approximately 3.1 million for both years. We are at cost recovery of about 50%. That's what our goal is, to try to get it as high as we can. And for recreation, if you're doing 40% or higher, you're generally doing pretty well in the valley. Next slide, please. Department overviews. So the different departments we have, we're going to talk about the City Manager's Office, City Attorney's Office, admin, Administration, Human Resources, Community Development, Finance, Public Works, Recreation, and Public Safety. Next slide, please. So City Manager's Office, our mission is to carry out the policies and programs approved by the council and provide administrative leadership. Office functions generally include leadership, strategies, providing sound fiscal policies and economic stability, having a knowledge of the legislative activities of federal, state, and local, as well as providing training in areas of customer service communications, and review and adopt policies to increase efficiency for service delivery. There's four FTEs in the City Manager's Office, there's no change for fiscal year '2526, '2627. Next slide, please. So achievements for fiscal year '2425, continue to host civic engagement. You have programs such as coffee with the City Manager and the Police Chief, Neighborhood Community Meetings, bi-weekly resident newsletter, as well as growing the business, business attraction and retention programs to grow the city's tax base. Continued partnership with C Click Fix to provide request management for constituents, our continued partnership with Simplicity. We've also launched the city website redesign as part of the city's full rebranding and communications initiative. Next slide, please. Also have updated and synchronized city branding on all city forums, hosted and collaborated with many community partners, including Lunar Year, Juneteenth, Pride Month, Veterans Day, Mid Autumn Festival, Fourth of July, tree lighting, and more. We've effectively managed the city's homeless engagement local program, also known as HELP, and we continue to work with Nielsen Merkmer to provide state legislative advocacy. We also have the Parking Management Plan and Downtown Visioning. Next slide, please. City Attorney Services are provided by Richards, Watson, and Gershon, also known as RWG. Our mission is to ensure compliance with the laws as well as provide guidance and legal support. Sophish functions to provide general legal advice, legal training to employees, ensuring compliance with federal, state, and local laws, represents the city in litigation, reviews staff reports, ordinances, resolutions, and land use advice and document preparation. Next slide, please. Administration and Human Resources. Administration and Human Resources, our missions to provide administrative support and services, including clerk, human resources, government access, general liability, and risk functions, and information technology for the city. Administration divisions are human resources and the City Clerk's Office. For fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven, we're recommending an additional management assistant, and that's basically offsetting, reducing one intern that we would be eliminating in order to have a management assistant. Next slide, please. So the achievements for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, we've successfully implemented the twenty-twenty-three to twenty-two-five Memorandum of Understanding with Teamsters Local Eighty-Five-Six, developed a workplace violence prevention policy, also developed metrics to measure citywide vacancy rates, and implemented the requirements of Assembly Bill Two-Five-Six-One. You saw that at the last council meeting. Facilitated and promoted forty-nine trainings in a variety of topics, as well as developed and revised personnel forms, facilitated eighteen recruitments, filling twenty-six positions from there, including twelve promotions, and hosted several successful employee recognition events. Next slide, please. Conducted two municipal elections, regular election for three district offices in the citywide ballot measure, and a special election. Proposed a city council term limit measure on the ballot that was approved by seventy-eight percent of voters. Conducted community outreach and through public service announcements, amended the city's conflict of interest code, received and uploaded campaign financial statements, managed city's contract with Millbrae Community Television, or MCTV. Next slide, please. Managed the city's websites with updated content, coordinated commission and committee recruitment and training, conducted training sessions for city staff serving on commissions and media liaisons, automated the retention of agreements executed through DocuSign and Laserfish, digitized all city council resolutions, sure our city clerks very proud from nineteen-sixty-three to the present. Organized and supported various official city events hosted by the city council, City Manager's Office, and provided impartial administrative support for the fire assessment process. Next slide, please. Our goals for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-sevens, to continue to revise the Millbrae Personnel Rules and Regulations, improve the recruitment process, develop and implement policies for uniform decisions, facilitate risk management, performance management, continue our commission and committee training, continue progress on the Laserfish Project, and continue to provide staff training on the Brown Act and records request responsibility, as well as the annual records destructions of records. Next slide, please. Community Development. Our mission is to regulate and guide development on private property to ensure the public health, safety, general welfare, and quality of life of the community. Community Development's composed of five divisions, that would be planning, building, code enforcement, housing, and economic development. It's recommended for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, to have an additional code enforcement officer, bringing the total to ten FTEs, our full-time equivalents. Next slide, please. Achievements for twenty-four, twenty-five, a new tree ordinance was prepared, also thirteen-oh-one Broadway and ninety-seven unit affordable housing development, received entitlements. Projects expected to break ground this summer. In twenty-twenty-four, the department also initiated the preparation of a new objective residential design standards, and launched a community questionnaire, community workshop. Next slide, please. The department prepared a local density bonus and affordable housing next study as well, and the density bonus is anticipated to be brought forward relatively soon, here in the summer of twenty-twenty-five. And we also entered into a contract with Cloud Permit for a new permitting software, so that's currently being implemented and expected to be functional relatively soon, within the next few months. Department was awarded a competitive three-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, or MTC, for parking, for updating its parking management policies, for compliance with MTC's transit-oriented communities policy. And it's underway right now. Next slide, please. Goals for next two fiscal years are to improve and enhance code enforcement services and response completion of the city's residential objective design standards, continue to improve improvements to the department's customer service initiatives, including the completion of a new user-friendly online permitting software, identify and provide opportunities for small business growth and improvement through partnerships and education programs. Next slide. Continue to ensure high-quality new development contributes their fair share of the cost and impact to the city infrastructure, work with the county, regional, and state agencies to ensure Millbrae's local interests are represented, and to strive to achieve inclusive and active public participation in the planning and decision-making process. Next slide, please. Finance. Our mission is to maintain the city's high standard of financial excellence by providing citizens, the city council, city manager, and city departments with quality and sound financial man, financial management, and professional, effective, responsive, and courteous customer service. We're composed of three divisions, financial management, utility billing, treasury, and debt. We have nine FTEs. There's no change for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven. Next slide, please. Achievements for twenty-four, twenty-five, we now provide fiscal agent services for commute.org. We started that this fiscal year in twenty-four, twenty-five. We've been awarded two awards from the Government Finance Officers Association, or JFOA, one for the budget, the other for our ACFA, our Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Along with the Public Works Department, we conducted a water rate study, determined the rates for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, that's currently underway, through twenty-nine, thirty, and that'll be brought back to the council for the public hearing on the June tenth meeting. Also established assistance oversight committee to review the transient occupancy tax and fire assessment. Next slide, please. Our goals for twenty-five, twenty-six is to continue to prudently manage the city's investment portfolio. We're looking at implementing an ability to play, pay online. That's in coordination with the Community Development Department. So as soon as the permitting software is there, we're going to try to get that to function online as well, and we're working with Engineering, Public Works. We're looking to modernize the city's phone systems to an updated network. And along with the Public Works Department, in two years, we're looking at conducting a sewer rate study in fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, to determine the rates for fiscal years twenty-seven, twenty-eight through thirty-one, thirty-two. We're also looking to modernize the city's information technology infrastructure. Next slide. Public Works. Our mission is to provide essential services to the citizens of Millbrae in a prompt, courteous, safe, efficient, and cost-effective manner. Through its dedicated employees, Public Works strives to plan, design, build, maintain, and operate city infrastructure in a manner that respects the environment and the ability to adequately preserve these assets for succeeding generations. Public Works divisions include engineering and administration, utilities and operations, and parks. We're recommending an increase of three FTEs, full-time equivalents, two additional maintenance worker twos, one for water, one for sewer, and the pump mechanic, that's actually split between water and sewer, starting fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven. Achievements for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, this is actually a pretty long list, so I'll go through this. Completed the Taylor Middle School basketball courts renovation, construction of the Millbrae Rec Center Security, traffic calming along Park Boulevard, Lomita, San Luis Obispo, San Anselmo, and San Juan. We talked about this earlier, completed the Marina Vista Park renovation project, which was awarded the twenty-twenty-five APWA Silicon Valley Project of the Year Award. Completed Hawthorne Way Road Rehabilitation, pavement maintenance for twenty-twenty-three, and we've been adding milkweed to the drought-tolerant landscaping project to provide a waste station for monarch butterflies. Next slide, please. So also planted nineteen London plane trees and Taylor and Menorca. Assisted in revising the city tree ordinance with the Community Development Department and the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee. Installed EV charging stations for use at City Hall and the corp yard, and also awarded the twenty-twenty-five street light conversion to LED project to St. Francis Electric, convert ninety-six high-pressure sodium induction and outdated LED streetlights to new smart light emitting diodes or LEDs. Completed a recycled water feasibility study and an alternatives analysis. Also, this was mentioned earlier as well, completed the Near-Shore Outfall Project, which was also awarded the twenty-twenty-five APWA Project of the Year under the sewers category. Next slide. Goals for twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven, safe and clean city, continue to actively participate in regional planning to best serve the interests of the city, continue to respond quickly and effectively to emergencies and changing priorities, continue to promote environmentally sustainable infrastructure by maintaining and upgrading existing city facilities, also implementing the green city infrastructure and city projects, and conducting urban tree management. Next slide, please. So we've added milkweed and other neck plants to lawn conversion and drought-resistant landscaping. We've planted trees under the Free or Subsidized Shade Tree Program to increase urban canopy coverage. We continue the city's traffic calming program. We also maintain a safe and attractive work environment for the public and our employees. Next slide. We've completed design for the Alcuminio Real median improvement project. We're preparing the downtown parking management plan. Continue to monitor storm water inflow. We've continued with preventative maintenance for our collections and storm systems, as well as our sanitary sewer. We use CCTV inspection to identify infiltration and inflow and possible broken pipes. We point repairs and replacement sewer mains and water mains when identified, and we respond to emergencies quickly. We provide twenty-four-seven collection system service. Next slide, please. We continue to update the sewer water and storm drain maps, entering stop signs and ADA ramps as well. We properly repair potholes, sidewalk trip and fall hazards, storm drain pipes and failures. We're continuing to monitor our progress underneath that ADA Transition Planner, American Disabilities Act, and we completed the, we're going to complete the construction for the Marina Vista Sewer Replacement Pavement Rehabilitation Project, bringing improvements to our sanitary sewer system to current standards. Next slide, please. We're continuing to convert the streetlights to LED to improve nighttime illumination and increase the safety. We're going to complete the twenty-twenty-five street resurfacing project on a lot of streets, Helen, Brookside, Mosswood, Lomita Terrace, Burnwood, Ridgewood, Robin, Elmwood, Glenwood, Oakwood, Ranbury, Claremont, Lynnwood, and Pinehurst. We're going to continue to assess and repair sidewalks in multiple residential zones. We're completing about ten miles of sanitary sewer inspection using CCTV and sewer cleaning, and one of our goals is to complete the Bayside Manor Park renovation project in the next couple of years. Next slide, please. We've also coordinated and implemented a citywide maintenance, sidewalk maintenance program, maintaining citywide parks and landscaped areas, complete the design for the downtown specific plan, and completing the construction of the Millbrae Transit Center Micro Mobility Hub Pilot Project. Next slide, please. So we're also looking at smart city signals, bike and pedestrian detection system. We're looking at a concept plan to enhance the spur trail between Hillcrest and Taylor. Continue to pursue grants for infrastructure-related projects. We've done a lot of that this year. We've gotten over a million dollars in just grants alone, so Public Works has done a great job with that. Also assisting coordinate with the school district for safe routes, and we continue to promote our One Dig policy to ensure efficiency, so that we basically get everything in one swoop. Next slide. All right, now we're going to talk about recreation. Our mission is to engage the community in quality, innovative, and exciting experiences. The Recreation Division is divided into city-provided classes and contract classes, facility rentals and special events, and administration. We're recommending a one FTE add, an additional park services attendant, and starting next fiscal year, that would bring the FTE count from seven-point-seven-five to eight-point-seven-five. Next slide, please. Achievements for recreation, they've done a great job of increasing facility rental revenue, contracting class revenue as well, and increasing participation in youth sports. But they've done exceedingly well with senior program participation. That's up by seventy percent, and adult sports offerings, that's up by a whopping hundred-and-fifty-eight percent. Recreation's done an outstanding job of that. Next slide, please. So goals for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, continue to promote, respect the rec campaign to foster culture of respect and responsibility within the community, growing participation to increase revenue and optimize facility rentals. For infrastructure, continue to collaborate with Public Works to conduct community outreach on capital improvement programs related to parks and recreation. Next slide, please. Also, look at sovereign city governance, supporting the committees and commissions like Parks and Rec Commission, Sister Cities Commission, Millbrae Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, Senior Advisory Committee, and Youth Advisory Committee. Also, in community engagement, in fall of twenty-five and twenty-six, we will be assessing the community participation in recreation classes, camps, and events to ensure that it aligns with the residents' interests. So we'll be checking in with the residents on that. Next slide, please. So for public safety, fire services are provided by Central County Fire Department. Each of the two fire stations are continually staffed by three personnel on duty at any times. There's three shifts. Each of the three staff, that would be one firefighter, one fire engineer, and one fire captain. It's a total of eighteen FTEs, because we have two stations here in Millbrae, with an active battalion chief at all times, for a total of twenty-one FTEs for the safety personnel. Our mission is dedicated to providing the highest level of service for our communities. Police services are provided by the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. San Mateo County Sheriff's Office provides a total of twenty-one-point-four-five FTEs, including eleven deputies, four sergeants, one detective, zero-point-nine-five captains or bureau chief, and two-point-five community service officers, one records technician, and one management analyst. Mission's dedicated to protecting the lives and property, and are committed to providing the highest level of professional law enforcement and correctional services. Next slide, please. Citywide zapping changes for twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven. We're recommending an increase of six FTE for the next two fiscal years combined. That would be going from ninety-nine-point-seven-five FTE to one-oh-five-point-seven-five. So one of the things we're looking at is a pump mechanic, adding an FTE to that. We're doing a reclass for rec coordinator one to two, and a park services attendant, that's another FTE. That's all included inside the six FTEs. Next slide, please. So budget overview, what we're looking at here is, we're generally pretty stable with budget, with the revenue, plus our fund balance. It's pretty much going across relatively the same for the general fund. There is a slight decline in revenue, mainly because we don't budget in grant revenue until we actually receive it. So for example, this year, when we budgeted grant revenue, we had about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand in the beginning, but we actually received about one-point-one, one-point-two million in grant revenue. So that's why that kind of looks a little strange. Also, there's an ebb and flow for development activities. Development decreases, that'll be a little bit of a decrease in development and permit fees. For the sewer, what you're seeing is a reduction in the estimated fund balance, because we're spending everything on those large capital projects, that eight million, eight-and-a-half million for the next two years. We're looking at Madrone, we're looking at Hillcrest, those are big projects, they're like four million dollars each, so we're getting a lot of things done there. Same with water. Water, we have the LaPrenda Water Tank that's coming up. Also, the water mains, that's pretty expensive as well. That's for Broadway, that's like three, three-and-a-half million dollars. So that's what we're doing for sewer and water, and for recreation, it's net zero. So recreation, basically, whatever money we put in is whatever we expend out, and like I mentioned before, we're trying to stay around the fifty percent mark. That's a really good mark to achieve. We want to be at least forty percent, staying around fifty percent for cost recovery. Next slide, please. So on the schedule, next, in two weeks, we have a public hearing and adoption of the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven operating budget and capital budget. And next slide, please. With that, staff recommendations to hold the study session to review the proposed fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven Water, Sewer, and Recreation Funds budget and department overviews, and provide direction. Available for any questions, and so are any of my colleagues, if you have any questions about any particular department.
Okay, thank you very much for a very thorough presentation. Anyone on the council? Questions, comments? Councilmember Ronaldi?
Yes, just a couple of quick comments, and I think you're spot-on on the thorough review there, very quite thorough. So looking through on the staff packet that was provided to us, noticing that the reserves decreased for fiscal year twenty-two-six to twenty-two-seven, given the economic development we're seeing from increased revenue projects like TOD two, Icons New Headquarters, and future potential economic development like the High-Speed Rail Settlement properties. Why does it decrease in twenty-two-six to twenty-two-seven? I'm noticing twenty-two-five to twenty-two-six, it looks like we have a three-hundred-thousand increase in reserves, and then in fiscal year twenty-two-six to twenty-two-seven, it's only thirty-five thousand. Any insight on that?
So with development activity, it's declining slightly, moving out. As new development activity comes in, and we find more and better data, we'll come back and update the council. The budget is dynamic. Right now, these are the numbers that we actually have, so we go based off of the data. As new developments happen, we'll come back to council, update the council, amend the budget, just like we do during mid-year. We basically get better data, these are our new projections, we come back and say, hey, these are the actual numbers now, this is what it's kind of looking at. And it goes both ways, whether it goes and declines, or whether it increases, then we'll actually see where we're at.
Got it, so it kind of goes in hand with the protocol for grants, and why they're not included within the budget numbers right now?
Right, with the grants, like, when the grants come in, then we recommend going ahead and funding these projects, because you want to make sure you have enough sufficient funds to actually fund the project. So that's why we bring it back to council with a grant, and then we break down- So that's why we bring it back to council with the grant and then we break down where the funding sources are. You know, general fund match, a grant here, maybe an impact fee. It all comes together at the council level with the different items. So once we see that, then we'll go ahead and bring it back and it'll adjust and amend the budget at that point.
That's absolutely great, you know, just in the news today, I think it was the other day maybe, we were recognized as number eight in California for economic develop, not economic development, but housing, creating housing. So you know, with all that housing being created, developer impact fees spurs economic development. So it's great to hear that. The last question is, what's the cost for the staff's recommendation to include the new park service attendant?
The park service attendant, I believe is about, honestly about 130 to 140,000, give or take.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, and to clarify that, that is a total compensation budget, so it's salary and benefits. Okay, all right, any other comment? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you for that presentation. You mentioned the proposed budget has an increase of about six FTEs over, it's over two years. And do we know about what, is it three per year or is it all front loaded or back loaded, do we know?
We'd recommend having them all start in 25, 26.
Okay, I'm just wondering if maybe we should have a little more clarity on the revenues coming in before we go ahead and give the okay on that.
So Mr. Mayor, we can go over what those six hires are. A majority of those are in our enterprise funds. So if you'd like, Mr. Sung's prepared to.
Sure.
Review on what.
Let's give us a little detail on that.
Sure, the six FTEs that we're looking at right now, one is in community development. The code enforcement officer, that's, majority of that's the part of the general fund. But there is some type of cost recovery depending on what's issued by the code enforcement officer. And then a second position would be in recreation, that's the park service attendant. That's also going to be issuing, I believe they're going to be issuing citations for people like at the fields, at the school fields that keep bringing their dogs there. You're also looking at a management assistant over in the admin and human resources. That's offset actually by removing one of the interns, so that's kind of an offset. The other three new positions, one is the pump mechanic, which is split between water and sewer. Then there's two more maintenance worker twos for a grand total of six. One maintenance worker for sewer, one maintenance worker for water.
Okay, yeah, I mean, those all sound like important positions to fund. And just for clarification, this is like a fixed two-year budget or it's more of like a rolling budget?
So the two-year budget is just kind of our plan. And as we get more information, we'll come back with modifications as we see. We'll have better revenue data, we'll have better expenditure data, we'll bring it back to council. We're going to have two mid-years because it's a two-year budget. But we're also going to have a budget update sometime around May or June, I believe, of next year so that we can kind of see what else we need to adjust. Remember, the budget's a dynamic document. We'll make recommendations based off of how much revenue we think we're going to get and also if expenditures change.
So it'd be more of an update a year from now as opposed to like, here's the brand new budget?
This is a little bit more efficient doing a two-year budget so that you kind of have an idea of what to do. But you still want to modify and change it with better data and better information. So it's an update coming up.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just one last quick question. On one of those slides, you mentioned adult sports recreational was up 158%. Is there any particular sport or activity that they're engaging in that's driving those numbers?
I'm going to have to turn that over to our recreation director.
I don't know if that's a loaded question or not.
So some of it is due to pickleball classes, so I will put that out there right away. We also have quite an active ping pong membership that happens at the Recreation Department, which that has gone up a lot. But mostly it is due to our agreement with the school district. And having that new agreement has allowed us to bring back some of the adult sports that we haven't been able to have for the past couple of years. So again, part of that new agreement where we help maintain the fields also allowed us to get back into the gym. And people are already signing up and have been doing adult basketball and volleyball in the Shea Center. So mostly due to additional offerings, but it is quite a big deal for our department, so thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments? Councilmember, when?
Just a comment, very thorough. I was trying to find questions to ask, could barely find any. It's great that you're able to frame the strategic initiatives as part of this discussion. So it's great to put that in context, not just randomly put data obviously on the slide deck. But I did have another comment on the FTEs, maybe just a request or a recommendation for future, but to provide rationale for why we need those FTEs, maybe more detailed rationale. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Riley.
Can you please back to few slide? Back to few slide with the chart? Oh yes, this one. First, I want to thank you, our colleague asked all of these questions, thank you. So I'm very happy to hear that because we are have a little bit over, left over and make even. So I heard lots of city they're underwater, they're negative in deficit. So thank you so much for our city staff and our manager, Tom's good leadership. Thank you, capable of Millbury, good, thank you.
Excellent, I have a little questions on, one of the FTE that you're hiring is a code enforcement officer, correct? That's, and that's full time?
That's full time.
Have we seen any uptick in terms of code enforcement issues and complaints?
Yeah, Mayor, I mean, there's quite a few violations, both in the commercial district and our residential district. And so the analysis is based on the demand and kind of demands of complaints that we received throughout the year. An additional code enforcement officer, we feel is warranted, so we're recommending that. As Mr. Sung said, the code enforcement officer has a legal ability to issue citations, so there will be some offsetting cost based on the citation revenue. It's an administrative citation, not a criminal citation. And so in our municipal code, it's issued, there's an appeal and due process period that's set up. Usually the city clerk is the hearing officer.
So it's a ticket?
It's, yeah, a ticket, yeah. So hard to tell if that's 30%, 40%, you know, 25%. You know, hopefully people comply, comply with our municipal code and we work code enforcement officer out of business. That would be fantastic.
I was just, yeah, I was just hoping, you know, if we're seeing a certain amount of demand in terms of trying to make sure everybody understands the code and be compliant and bring folks into compliance, I'm hopeful that this would be a bit of a temporary issue. Once we're able to get folks, you know, back into compliance, we can recycle some of these resources into maybe planning a building or, you know, some of those departments where we could help, you know, get people inspections faster, that sort of thing. I'm just trying to think out loud here without trying to, you know, I'm sure quarterback this whole thing here. But correct me if I'm wrong, if it's possible for, you know, this could be a bit of a temporary position. Whereas in the longer run, once we're able to get people back into compliance, we can recycle some of those staff time. Is that possible?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think that's a great point. And as I mentioned, so there is a tremendous amount of code violations that are out there. The commercial corridor, although we're starting to see, you know, the education and compliance anywhere from illegal uses to signage, but we also still have quite a bit of residential construction, you know, that's occurring without, you know, benefit of the proper permits, that type of thing. So to your point, yes, if, and as I mentioned, you know, we educate the public, we get more people aware that, you know, you need a permit in the process of the city, because we are here to help, then we can actually move in that position in, into building or some other area that we find ourselves in need of.
Okay, excellent, all right.
I mean, I will say this, we continue to do more with less. I think that's the thing with all the department heads, the management team, of course, the council, where we are adding staff as we grow and as we've identified these issues. But we're still going to run exceptionally lean, you know, but to a point, it's always a balance, right? Of the workload, not overburdening staff, but yet being lean enough to make sure that we can, you know, the ebb and flows, as Mr. Sung said, within the economy that we can manage to that. So we don't grow too big, too fast and overload ourselves so we can manage with it. But that's, I think that's an important thing. And I'll, you know, my hats off to all of our city staff for, you know, being supportive of that philosophy, doing more with less and helping us, you know, manage and provide every day and they're doing a great job.
Yeah, and I just kind of want to dovetail on that a little bit because we've always been, it's always been our culture within our city hall organization to do more with less. You know, everybody is pitching in, we have a very positive work environment, which I'm very, very, very thankful for. And we've spoken a few times about the need or the benefit of having an economic development manager, director, whatever, you know, you believe is right addition at some point, hopefully. And I'm trying to see how this could fit in to this budget and whether or not there is room to, you know, multi-plac some of our staff a little bit to achieve the goal that, you know, this council had identified during the goal setting that economic development is, should be a priority.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and it is. And as Mike said, as we look at our need, we look at the revenue and the dynamics of a budget, we will be bringing that back. We did not, that's not off of our radar, it's still very much on our radar. As we move forward with the business community, depending on where we're headed with, with the Business Improvement District or however that, you know, ultimately turns out when we kickstart that again, the first of 2026, we'll be bringing that back to the city council, one way or the other. It's just kind of what is the dynamics and where are we going to head in kind of those public-private partnerships with our business community versus, versus the city?
Thank you.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. And just a little bit, not related to staff and expenditure, but how is our VLF doing, Director Sung?
Currently, we're, I think we're around the same position that we were in last year. Every year, the state usually makes a little bit of a thread and they haven't failed to give us the VLF.
Yet.
That's as much as I can say for the VLF. But we've coordinated with the other cities, even the county, to ask the state to go ahead and fund us. We haven't heard anything back, but pretty much over the last 20 years, they've always funded it, albeit it's 14 months late.
Yeah, I mean, we do recognize that the state is looking at a $16 billion deficit, so there's a lot of challenges as far as ensuring that the localities such as us, the cities are getting the fair share of all these VLFs, which, correct me if I'm wrong, the lawyer in the room, it's mandated by state law that we receive it, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, not negotiable. So it's something that everybody needs to know despite some, might want to see a negotiation done. Anyhow, so with that said, anyone else on this council have any questions or comment for our director? All right, otherwise I entertain, public comment on this item? I don't have a speaker slip, I don't see your hands online.
That's correct, Mayor, I don't have a speaker slip or hands raised online.
Closing public comment on this item? Any final comments or else I can entertain a motion? Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Rinaldi and a second from Vice Mayor. Any final comments? All good? Your votes please.
Item number nine passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you very much. How are we doing on time, 9:21? Does anybody need a break or should we just move on to item 11?
Yes.
All good? Okay, all right, so we have item number 11. Adoption of a resolutions approving the amendment to the amended and restated water supply agreement between the city and county of San Francisco and wholesale customers in Alameda County, San Mateo County, Santa Clara County and the updated tier two drought response implementation plan. City manager.
Yes, Senator Mayor, I'd like to introduce our city engineer, Mr. Ahmad Hyatt, for a staff presentation and introduction of our Bosqua representative, Ms. McPherson, who's here this evening as well.
Excellent, thank you, Ahmad, thanks for joining us.
Yeah, good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Yes, Ahmad Hyatt, city engineer and CVP manager. I want to introduce the Bay Area Water Supply Conservation Agency, also known as Bosqua, and their representative Danielle McPherson, who will give us background and some key points in regard to these two resolutions, amendments with the agreement.
Thank you so much, thanks for joining us, Danielle.
Good evening, sorry, forgot how close I need to get. Good evening, city council members, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Again, my name is Danielle McPherson, I'm the Senior Water Resources Specialist at the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, otherwise Bosqua. So for context on the topics today, I'm just going to provide a very brief overview of Bosqua, our mission and how we work with the city of Millbrae. I'll review the water supply agreement between San Francisco and the wholesale customers, one of which is the city of Millbrae. And then with that context, I'll describe the two water supply reliability contract actions that are before you tonight. Next slide. So Bosqua was formed in 2003 by the California State Legislature. At the urging of local elected officials and other local leaders, our responsibility is to represent the interests of the water suppliers in San Mateo, Santa Clara and Alameda Counties and the 1.8 million residents and more than 40,000 businesses that they serve. What connects these 26 agencies is that they all rely on the San Francisco Regional Water System for their water supply. So for Millbrae, excuse me, Millbrae, you rely on it for 100% of your potable demand. So on behalf of the water users, Bosqua's mission is a reliable supply of high-quality water at a fair price. Next slide. So the regional water system, it stretches the width of California, starting in the headwaters of the Tuolumne River, where 85% of the supply comes from, it is stored in the Hetch Hetchy Reservoir. From there, it is conveyed entirely through gravity to the Bay Area where it picks up additional 15% of supply in some local reservoirs in the East Bay and the Peninsula. Bosqua has several responsibilities. The foremost is oversight of San Francisco's annual costs, their capital investments and the allocation of costs between the San Francisco retail customers and the wholesale customers. And we represent the Bosqua member agencies in negotiations with the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission. For example, the water supply amendment that is before you tonight. And we advocate with other stakeholders throughout the state on water supply reliability issues. We facilitate conservation programs for the member agencies to take part in. And we are engaged in two major efforts right now. One is an update to water demand and conservation projections for the member agencies. So the city of Millbrae will use those for your, those updated projections for your service area in your 2025 urban water management plan. The second one is an update to Bosqua's long-term reliable water supply strategy, which identifies potential future stressors that agencies might experience and solutions that Bosqua might be able to spearhead. Next slide. So I mentioned conservation programs. Bosqua administers 14 subscription conservation programs, four of which the city of Millbrae participates in. These programs, the agencies elect to participate and they pay the cost for the residents. But Bosqua administers them sort of economies of scale and facilitating implementation. We also offer core conservation programs that are available to all Bosqua member agencies and their customers. Those are things like landscape education classes, needed garden tours. Topics. Next slide. Okay, so the water supply agreement between San Francisco and the wholesale customers. This governs the water supply from the regional water system to the wholesale customer service area. Specifically, it defines how costs are allocated between San Francisco and the wholesale customers. And one component of that are these minimum purchase. And one component of that are these minimum purchase requirements that apply to four agencies with access to imported supplies. That is one element that is in the amendment package tonight, and I'll describe that more later. Another part of the water supply agreement to me is allocating water during drought between the San Francisco retail customers and the wholesale customers collectively. That is referred to as the Tier 1 Shortage Allocation Plan. The WSA Water Supply Agreement. Sorry. It also provides that the wholesale customers may develop a plan for allocating water amongst, that's made available from the Tier 1 Plan among the 26 agencies. But one thing to note here is that BOSCA has delegated authority and responsibility under the WSA.
We've got plenty of water.
We do right now. Thank you.
Yeah.
BOSCA has delegated authority and responsibility through the WSA, but we are not a party to the contract. Next slide. So like I mentioned, there are two water supply reliability contracts before you today. The first is an update to the Tier 1, Tier 2 Shortage Allocation Plan. This is an agreement among the wholesale customers, and San Francisco is not a party to it. The second is an amendment to the Water Supply Agreement between San Francisco and the wholesale customers. And there's the two elements I previously described, which I'll get into a little more detail moving forward. Next slide. Okay, so the shortages on the regional water system are governed by the Tier 1 and Tier 2 plans. So when San Francisco declares that there's, or identifies that there's a shortage, they first determine the available supply. That's represented in the orange pie on the far left. The Tier 1 Plan determines what portion of that goes to the retail customers and what portion goes to the wholesale customers. So that's represented in the middle pie there. And then the Tier 2 Plan is how that section that was allocated to the collective wholesale customers is distributed among the 26. A couple of things to note is that the Tier 1 and Tier 2 Plans only apply during droughts of 20% or less. Excess use charges are only applied during mandatory rationing scenarios. And the wholesale customers may transfer shortage allocations among themselves and with San Francisco. Next slide. So the existing Tier 2 Plan was adopted in 2011. It was first implemented during the 2021 through 2023 drought. And so 10 years later, a lot had changed during that time. And we identified that the plan was not operating as it was originally intended. Water use in the region has changed. Water use within agencies has changed significantly. So in 2022, BOSCA began facilitating a negotiation among the 26 agencies to update the Tier 2 Plan. You can imagine finding agreement among 26 agencies on how to share water during a drought is a very challenging process, and it took quite a bit of time. Two and a half years, to be exact, of monthly meetings that were either a half-day or full-day in person. At the very beginning of the process, each of the agencies identified a lead negotiator to represent their agency's interests. I can tell you that Craig Santos was at every single one of those meetings, and he was ensuring the best outcome for your constituents. One of, another element that was really important to meet for the updated plan was that it adhere to a set of policy principles that the wholesale customers agreed to at the very beginning of the process. Next slide. So those policy principles are listed here. The first is to provide sufficient water for health and safety, to avoid adverse economic impacts during drought, to provide predictability of drought allocations, and this is to help agencies plan and prepare. And the final one is to not disincentivize water use efficiency or past efforts to develop local supplies. So at a very high level, this is how water is allocated through the plan. We have minimum and maximum cutbacks. This is to ensure that each agency has to cut a little bit, at least, to meet the overall reduction required, but that no individual agency is overburdened. There's considerations for your residential population, as well as your non-residential commercial base. There's a small amount of water that is allocated for seasonal uses, such as irrigation and cooling towers. And then the final step in the plan allocates water based on your actual purchases from San Francisco and your individual supply guarantee. There's a weighted share that is applied there. Next slide. So this chart shows cutbacks in a 15% average cutback to the wholesale customers. The blue bar shows the cutbacks during the existing plan, and the orange bar shows cutbacks with the updated plan. You can see that Millbrae is well below the average cutback. And I think that's largely due in part to past and ongoing efforts to improve efficiency and lower demand in your service area. Next slide. So to find unanimity among the 26 agencies, we really had to broaden the scope of the agreement to include two contract amendments to the Water Supply Agreement with San Francisco. And that, those are the Tier 1 Plan and the Minimum Purchase Requirements, which I will describe next. But for this plan to go into effect, it must be adopted by each and every one of the 26 member agencies. Next slide. Okay, so moving on to the two amendments to the Water Supply Agreement. This is the second contract action. The first one, this is, there's only one change to the Tier 1 Shortage Allocation Plan, and it is a huge win for the wholesale customers. San Francisco has agreed to include what we're calling the Excess Use Charge Family Plan. I know that is a mouthful, but you can think of it like your cell phone family plan. So if the wholesale customers collectively use less than their Tier 1 allocation, a agency that exceeded its individual allocation will not receive an excess use charge. So to illustrate this, we have the chart here. We have four hypothetical agencies. The blue bar shows their allocation. The yellow bar shows their drought use. And on the far right, we have the sum of the four. You can see that two of the agencies used less than their shortage allocation. Their customers conserved what they needed to and more. But two of the agencies exceeded their allocation. But on the total bar, you see that in all, in some, they use less than their collective allocation. And in this case, those two agencies would not receive an excess use charge. So as you can imagine, this is a really big win for the wholesale customers. And next slide. All right, so the second part has to do with the Minimum Purchase Requirements. These requirements have been in place since the 1960s. And like I said, they apply to just four agencies that have access to imported water supplies other than San Francisco. In 2009, these quantities were reduced. We refer to them as the Minimum Purchase Quantities, or MPQ, for going forward. So in 2009, the MPQs were reduced very slightly, but it's been made clear that there's a need for a reset now based on changed conditions. So some of these agencies have invested so heavily in water use efficiency and developing local supplies, they just simply do not have the demand in their service area to use the water that they are required to purchase on an annual basis. So those agencies in those circumstances will receive a bill, sometimes in several millions of dollars, for water their customers cannot use. So even though the demand overall is down on the regional water system, it is still subject to severe drought. Next slide. So there are three elements or changes to the Minimum Purchase Requirements. The first is a reset, and that's to reduce the minimum purchase quantities to reflect current demand on the regional water system by those agencies. The second one is a one-year drought rebound minimum purchase quantity. And that would set for one year the minimum purchase quantity at the halfway between, point between an agency's minimum purchase quantity and their drought purchases. So if they had an MPQ of 10 NGD, million gallons per day, and their customers use 8 million gallons a day in a drought, the halfway point is 9. And for that one year, as, as demand is rebounding to pre-drought levels, it gives them that, that one-year relief. The third is the MPQ, it's another mouthful, I apologize, MPQ Collective Purchases Family Plan. This is similar to the Tier 1 Family Plan I described, but it's completely separate. They act separate from each other. In this circumstance, if the four minimum purchase agencies collectively purchase at least the sum of their minimum purchase quantities, no penalties will be charged to an agency that didn't meet its own, its individual minimum requirement. All right, so we did a cost-benefit analysis on this. There is a very minor cost to all wholesale customers and to San Francisco. San Francisco has agreed to shoulder their portion of the burden on this. It is very minor, though. It's less than a cent to 4 cents per 100 cubic feet, or CCF. That's an increase of 13 tenths of a percent to 72 tenths of a percent for the cost of water. So it's very minor. However, the benefits are very significant. And this removes a barrier for those minimum purchase agencies to continue to invest in efficiency and local alternative supplies. These agencies are particularly well-suited to do so because they are large. They manage their own wastewater so they can develop recycled water without necessarily needing multi-party agreements. They all have access to groundwater. But as they reduce their demand on the regional water system, that decreases the likelihood of drought and the severity of drought. So they're able to do that. And it also minimizes the likelihood that agencies are charged for water that their customers cannot use. Next slide. Okay, so that actually concludes my presentation. These next two slides are the staff recommendation on the two resolutions approving the updated Tier 2 Plan and the amendments to the Water Supply Agreement.
Okay, thank you so much for a very yet detailed presentation. Any questions or comment from the council to our Bosqua representative? Go ahead, Councilmember Nguyen.
Yeah, I'm curious about your formula and how you determine the breakdown on the, I think it was the Tier 2 allocations? Like, you know, one example I'm just thinking through is like the, I guess, a population? Is it flow rate? What is, what is the parameters you guys use to come up with the breakdown?
Yeah, sure. So for that first step in the allocation, it is based on your residential population. So of the most immediate fiscal year, the previous fiscal year. So as your agency grows, you receive an amount of water on a per capita basis based on your residential population.
Is that pretty much it, just population?
Oh, no, okay. If you want to, if you don't mind going back to the slide that gave that overview, it might be helpful to... The second step in the allocation is based on your non-residential use. So it takes, it looks at your water demand from your non-residential sector. One more forward, two more forward now. It looks at demand from your non-residential sector, and it estimates the indoor use on that. And so your base use, eliminating discretionary use like irrigation. And it allocates a certain amount based on your, each agency's non-residential customer base. The seasonal allocation is based on water demand that's, you know, in the seasonal months, like I said, cooling towers and irrigation. And then the final step is that weighted share of your actual purchases and your individual supply guarantee. So as Millbrae grows and potentially its water demand grows, that, that portion for Millbrae increases.
So in the situation where you have a small population, but it uses large water, right? Could you kind of run through an example versus like a larger population that uses less water?
Sure. Well, I mean, I think that first step is really helpful. It's, the allocation in, beginning, right now is 47 gallons per person per day in step one. So if your agency is using 160 gallons per person per day, you're going to be taking a large haircut on that, on that residential use. As opposed to an agency like Millbrae, I think your residential per capita water use is closer to 55 to 58 GPCD. So you're getting a large portion of your residential demand in, just in that first step.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, we'll contact some public comment if there are any. I think we have one speaker slip, and I don't have any hand raised online. Anne Schneider.
So nice that Bosqua staff came here after having just broken her foot. So hope you get home safe tonight. I am your Bosqua representative. This is my two and a half years on this. We've worked for years. We've worked for years on these. And the main thing is for cities to not have to pay for water they're not using on that. So it's the four cities. If you looked, if you noticed, two of those, Sunnyvale and Mountain View, pretty familiar with Mountain View. Mountain View and Palo Alto are also working on recycled water. We're learning right now from some of the recycled water experiments that they're doing which vegetation can handle slightly saltier water and things like that. But this was something that was approved, I believe unanimous vote, by all the Bosqua members last fall, so I'm glad to see that it's here. And again, to help the four cities. I know the city manager didn't bring this up. This is for something for you all to think about in the future. There is still San Jose that wants to become a member, or the Santa Clara Valley Water District? City, okay, city of... So there's a few other things down the line that would have to come to the full board, a full vote of the board in terms of long-term water supply. But this, this is something that was unanimous, does make sense. There is something I confused tonight with what's happening in June when the water rates go up. The one oddity is that the Bosqua members, the 26 agencies, we get to review the capital improvement plan for SFPUC, but we do not get to say yes or no on different projects. And that is something that I hope you all will consider in your meeting in June, because that's a function of the water rates that our customers here in Millbrae are quite unhappy with. But for this, it makes perfect sense to approve it tonight. Thank you. I'm here if you have any other questions.
Okay. I believe ends public comment on item 11. Bring it back to the council. Any question for our consultant or our BOSCA representative? All right, well, in the absence of that, anyone want to make a motion to move this along? All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Rinaldi and a second from the Vice Mayor. Any final comments? Your votes, please.
Item 111 passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us this evening. All right. So that wraps all the agenda items tonight. And moving on to council comments, who would like to get started? Any volunteer? Councilmember Rinaldi.
So I'll make comments fairly quick. Very productive last two weeks, having meetings with Park and Recs Department, working on, attending meetings with the San Mateo Union High School District to discuss use of facilities during weekend hours to get them stabilized. Also, working with the Safe Routes to School Travel Fellowship to apply for grants, and working with BPAC on the regional level to make sure that the grants that are being allocated are being used accordingly. So very busy week.
Okay, thank you for the comment. Anyone else? Any other volunteers? Mr. Vice Mayor?
I'll just make a comment that I don't really have anything to report tonight. The Sister Cities Commission meeting was canceled due to the holiday yesterday, and the Library Joint Powers Authority meeting was canceled at the last minute due to a gas odor detected in the building. So hopefully that issue has been resolved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Councilmember Nguyen.
So attending the council, the cities, there was this talk over using drones for law enforcement. It was done by the Police Department of San Mateo. And it, it looked, at least from their data, it showed pretty effective. They were able to respond within, I think it was 100 seconds when, when there's an incident. So not really an action needed, but just went to maybe potentially investigate that if we haven't already for, for our own law enforcement.
Better yet, maybe that's a warning not to mess around in San Mateo County.
Okay, very well, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Sorry to piggyback on that, yeah, that was a really incredible tour that we had of the Police Department at San Mateo, and it's not just the drones, it's really all of the real-time data that they have from body cameras, from various cameras around the city, and to be able to have access to all of that is quite a useful tool to be able to address incidents as they're unfolding in real time. I know our Sheriff's Office and all the other police departments around the county had a similar tour, probably more in-depth than what we had, so I'm glad to see that information is being shared, and hopefully it's a way, there are ways that we can collaborate well between cities here throughout San Mateo County. Thank you.
Excellent, anyone else? Okay, so Transportation Authority will have a meeting on June 5th, which is the next, it's the Thursday, Thursday after next, oh, actually, next Thursday, to discuss, hopefully, we can get some traction, hopefully I'm optimistic about it, on the BART Fairgate, which is the $10.3 million that is needed in order to get the fair gate done in all five stations here in San Mateo County. I've been in touch with the BART staff, they are trying to line up the installation schedule as quickly as possible here, right after the vote, hopefully, to get the fair gate done, so that we can protect public safety, ensuring that there's no more fare jumping, and ensuring that we protect the integrity, and, you know, ensuring that those ridership experience is as good as possible within the BART system. And this is an important piece within the whole public safety realm, and how to improve the station access, public safety around the entire BART system specifically, to the analyzed stations such as, such as us. More discussions on how to fund transportation on their fiscal challenges, so there'll be a special meeting, I believe it's July 30th, on the Transportation Authority to discuss whether or not San Mateo County would opt in to the Senate Bill 63, I believe the number, which is to, you know, the sales tax measure to fund these transportation agencies. There's still a lot of discussions, you know, in and out of the entire county, but my understanding is the decision will need to be made early part of August, and the TA and the SAMTRAN Board is working very closely together to try to come up with a decision on behalf of our county, and I believe also the CCAC is having an opinion and weighing in on that topic as well. So more to come on those very important regional issues, but that's, that's all the update I have for now. Anyone else, anything else? Otherwise, nothing else, anything else from staff?
Nothing else from staff, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, we close the meeting tonight at 9:50 PM. Thank you all.